This evening, members of council and those in the gallery, we have with us singing the National Anthem is the West Lane Secondary School Ensemble called Eclipse. Eclipse is a small edition female vocal ensemble from West Lane, and they performed previously at the council's inauguration, the volunteer recognition evening, and for the Liberal Party and the premier. They rehearse twice per week and compete yearly in the Port Coburn Festival of Arts Competition, winning first place every year. The group, under the direction of Linda Bovert, consists of Brittany Porter, Samantha Olson, Michelle Bresky, Sarah Hardy, Angela Crane, Allison Crane, Stephanie Farmer, Jennifer Farmer, and Alexis Radochik. And the singing of the National Anthem at council, of course, is coordinated, as you know, through the Arts and Culture Committee. At this time, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce to you Eclipse.
(Singing)
this evening. I was very proud of your presentations, your great ambassadors to the city as well, and we appreciate the fact you take time to come to council on occasion to grace us with your presence. Thank you very much on behalf of the members of council. Members of council, the first order of business this evening is the adoption of the minutes of the council meeting held on February 19, 2007. Are there any changes or deletions at all?
Want to know how you did.
Having seen none, move by Councilor Fisher, second by Councilor Carrio. Any further discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. At this time, I'm going to ask members of councils if they have any disclosures of a pecuniary interest and a brief explanation thereof for any of their concerns with regard to conflict. Yes, Councilor Carrio?
Thank you, worship. Even though I don't understand why we have to declare a conflict of interest on a matter from a service club, MW 2007-22, Club Italia is coming before council, I'm a member of that club in good standing, and two property matters, your worship. I don't know the outcome of them because I left the meeting, but one on Stanley Avenue and the other one in the industrial park. Conflict on those two issues, your worship.
Thank you. So noted. Councilor Peter Angelo?
Thank you, worship. One of the same conflicts, MW 2007-22, dealing with Club Italia, I myself am a member as well as my parents.
Thank you. So noted. Councilor Di Addati?
I have the same conflict. I'm also a member of Club Italia.
Good. Thank you. So noted. Councilor Anoni?
I also have the same conflict. A member of my family is a member of Club Italia and Lake Alton. Councilor Carrio, I think it's asked mine that we have a conflict on this.
Okay. Councilor Wayne?
Check number 308513 made out to the Niagara Parks Commission and bylaw 2007-46 affecting the Niagara Parks Commission. My spouse is an employee there. Also, check number 308727 payable to a trust fund in my name.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Thompson?
I am an honorary member of Club Italia from many years back. I don't have a conflict, and I'm happy to vote for the property.
Thank you. A member of the council, I too am a member of Club Italia, and I want to avoid any apprehension of bias as well, so I'm going to declare a conflict, and I'll sit down from the chair at the time that matter comes forward. Are there any other conflicts of interest? Having seen none, we proceed on. I'd like to welcome, while we're waiting for the clerk as well, we have regional councillors, William Smeaton and Regional Counselor Barbara Greenwood, intended this evening. Welcome, along with our member of provincial parliament, Mr. Kim Crater. Welcome as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, would you be kind enough to introduce the next item on the agenda, please?
A public meeting is now being convened to consider a proposed amendment to the city's official plan and zoning bylaw for a proposed landfill site at the north side of Thoral Stone Road, west of Taylor Road, and south of the former Mountain Road, and east of Thoral Town Line Road. Notice was given by first-class mail in accordance with the Planning Act on Friday, February 9, 2007, and by posting a sign on the property in question. Anyone who wants notice as a passage of the official plan and zoning bylaw amendment or to participate in any site plan process, I don't think it's applicable in this case, shall leave their name on the sign-in sheets outside the council chamber.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. At this time, I'd like to ask the deputy planning director to explain the purpose and the reason for the proposed bylaw amendment. Mr. Hilevich?
Thank you, worship. This property involves approximately 85 hectares of land in the location the clerk has just identified. That is the west side of Taylor Road, extending over to Town Line Road on the west, and bounded by the former Mountain Road on the north. The application is brought forward by Walker Industries, which intends to introduce a new land use into the zoning bylaw. The property is currently zoned extractive industrial, and they wish to add an additional use. Go to the next slide. Back to the next one. So the proponents intend to amend the official plan and zoning bylaw to permit the lands to be used for a private landfill operation once the quarry operations have ceased to operate there. As I mentioned, the lands are 65 hectares in size. The proposal is to expand the landfill that currently operates on the north side of the former Mountain Road. Once the capacity of that landfill has been reached, which is approximately three years, the new landfill operations would begin once the quarrying of the south quarry has occurred, and that would begin in approximately 2005. The property has received a conditional environmental assessment, which would accommodate 750,000 tonnes of solid, non-hazardous industrial and commercial waste from within Ontario, of which 100,000 additional tonnes is also reserved for Niagara region for emergency and contingency waste residue. The application went through a planning analysis in our department, and we examined this application from a policy and growth plan issue. But what we were able to determine is that the environmental assessment study has actually addressed many of the land use issues. The official plan requires that there be a suitability of the site for this type of use. In looking at this application, as I mentioned, there's a waste disposal operation already to the north. There's in Thoral to the west, there are already industrial uses as well, and to the south and east of this property are predominantly agricultural uses. The environmental assessment as well requires that a number of the potential impacts be addressed. This includes wet vacuuming and sweeping of the roads to reduce dust, a more efficient gas collection system, and to reduce odors that emanate from the waste and the methane that's collected from there as well. And as well, there are requirements for Birmingham Planting to buffer the property from the adjacent properties. There are also a number of mitigation measures which are required through the environmental assessment process. These include monitoring, community liaison committee, and those kinds of impacts would be addressed. As well, there are financial considerations accruing to the municipality. This includes, over a period of operation, of the landfill of approximately 20 years, accruing to the amount of $14 million. There are some positive impacts from having this landfill as well because of reduced costs to transport waste from our industrial, commercial, and institutional businesses, as well as the compost and drop-off facility and the opportunity to collect the methane gas for industrial use. The official plan amendment will set a cap on the amount of waste that can actually be collected in there in the landfill operation. The end-use of the property is to be for agricultural purposes. The current zoning is extractive industrial, and this amendment is basically add one new use, which would be the landfill operation to the extractive industrial zoning. Therefore, we believe that the application has gone through a detailed environmental assessment process addressing many of the public and agencies' concerns. The studies involved as well adjust the official plan and zoning, and the city actually acknowledges the Walker Brothers' quarries' concerns to address the community's considerations. Those are the highlights of this application. The staff is therefore recommending that council approve the application to amend the official plan and zoning bylaw for these lands, and that the report be forwarded to the region of Niagara.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hilevich. Members of the public are advised that failure to make an oral or written submission at this public meeting could result in the Ontario Municipal Board dismissing any referral that it receives if the party has not made an oral or written submission at this public meeting. Council will hear from anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to the proposed bylaw amendment. Is there anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak? Please come forward. And if you'd be kind enough to state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Jane Grandoni, rural route number one, 4810 Garner Road, Niagara Falls.
Thank you.
Oh, I have copies of my letter. I'm sorry.
I must admit, I was not able to attend the Walkers' open houses due to some personal reasons and also involvement, heavy involvement in the burnwood application. There is a tower proposed to be built on the escarpment just down the road from the quarry amendment. Wouldn't it be interesting to be a tour guide on the top of this tower and describe the beautiful surroundings on and adjacent to this globally recognized biosphere? Imagine what you could say. Here to the east, you have the Niagara Falls garbage dump. To the west is the Walker Provincial Garbage Dump, and behind you our newest above-ground dump. And then to the north is Lake Ontario, where 50 years ago you could swim, but in the short space of five decades, barely a generation, we have turned it into an open sewer. What a legacy, all achieved in just 100 years. The only people who can change this is government at all levels. The little people do not have the money to alter this suicidal trend. However, I would like to express in some small way my opposition to this amendment in a beautiful, once beautiful area where I have lived all of my life. I was the only member of the public who attended the region's public meeting in Thoral on February 21, 07. I wondered as I drove home, where are all the elected politicians and local candidates who ran for office proclaiming major concerns for our environment? As for concerned nearby residents, Walkers admitted that they are paid $5,000 a year to compensate for any nuisances. I believe that's within 500 or so meters. The waste accepted at this proposed dump will be industrial, commercial, and institutional, including hospitals. I just learned that a $17 million recycling plant is to be built and well-in to handle construction and demolition materials, as well as organic matter. At the proposed Walker site, one-third of the waste will come from the region and two-thirds from other areas of the province. Walkers is proposing to spend some $62 million on capital cost for this 85 hectare dump, almost 200 acres. How many times does 17 million divide into 62 million? One could build almost four recycling plants with this money for the type of waste that they receive. To approve an 85.6 hectare dump all at once discourages recycling of this particular kind across the province. Trucking it here will use a lot of fuel. As for the big trucker lobby, they will make money whether they truck to a dump or a recycling plant. The city must look at what others are doing. I am told that the city of Halifax handles all waste above ground. Years ago, I remember seeing a picture of a garbage dump for a very large city in India. I shall never forget how small it was, about the size of a large kitchen, because everything was recycled. Is the Third World ahead of us? Are we the Fourth World? The Farm Bulletin reported that there are 5,000 and more garbage dumps across Ontario. How much farm food land is that? We have done this in a short time of 100 years. These lands were proven to have capability for grapes and fruit at the major OMB Urban Boundary hearings of 1978. If accurate mapping were imposed to fulfill the findings of that OMB decision by the region and the city, and it should have been done a long time ago, then this quarrying would never have been allowed and neither would the dump. This company is buying up land along the Town Line Road in Niagara Falls and Thoral. I asked a nearby landowner about future use, and the Walker spokesperson informed him that the future use would be for quarrying or residential development. Such statements note by the purported need for quarrying when that area seeks amendments. 10 years ago, when the people out there made an attempt to stop quarry expansion to the east of Beechwood Road, the quarry owners said that this area of the proposed amendment was to be rehabilitated to agriculture, but now they want another dump. Now, they have said, I noticed in the bulletins up here, that the end-use would be agricultural, and I understand that only to be for switchgrass, which they are attempting to grow for fuel. My understanding is that Ministry of Agriculture and Food will not allow food products to come off of these dumps, at least not yet. Walkers informed us that it will be two years before they will start dumping on this new proposed site, as that is the anticipated completion date for mining and rock. That gives the council time to educate itself on alternatives and to consider shrinking the size of this monster to force implementation of recycling or to force a total above-ground The proposal to import waste from outside the region should be refused because it simply encourages dumping, not recycling. I would request that this letter be attached to the council minutes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of Ms. Grandoni from members of council? Okay. Having seen none, is there anyone else other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this matter? Anyone other than the applicant who wishes to speak to this matter? Having seen none, at this time, council will hear from the applicant or the representative. Mr. Fisher? Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of council. We don't have a lot to add to staff's presentation tonight. I did want to take this opportunity, though, to say thanks to this council and to many members of your staff who've worked closely with us over the last four years on many aspects of this project, and I think have added some really valuable input on behalf of the city. So otherwise, I'm here with members of our team to answer any questions that council members may have directly that the staff may like to refer to us.
Thank you. Are there any questions, members of council? Yes, Councilor Di Addati?
Thank you, worship. Thank you, Mr. Fisher, for coming out tonight. My questions are mostly of a quantitative nature in regard to the financial implications. Now, first of all, I do appreciate very much the fact that there will be some financial benefit for the city for hosting such a, what would we call this? Not a facility, an entity, we'll just call it that. My question is regarding the current tonnage rates. Currently, what are they approximately? Do we know what they are right now?
The current intake rate is very similar to what the new proposal is, so about 750,000 tonnes a year.
No, I'm sorry. The charge, somewhere to bring a tonne of garbage to dispose that, what is the current rate right now?
Well, there's a real range. It depends on how much you bring, but there's quite a range, and in honesty and in fairness, we would consider that to be proprietary information, I think, to the company and its customers.
All right. Let me ask you a different question then. From, let's say, the early 80s to now, is it fair to say that the rate has gone up for tonnage waste?
Certainly, over the last 25 years, it would have gone up, but it's actually gone up and down during that time.
So, and I'm sure, like any graph it would, but overall, if you were to average it out, would you say it's significantly up?
From the 80s.
Yes. And the reason I ask that is because the early 80s is about 25 years ago, and that's approximately what we're looking at for the term of this entity. And my only question to you is I see that we're looking at 75 cents per tonne for the municipality, which is fine, I think, today, but in 25 years, I question where that's going to be, and I don't expect that you'll know the answer to that any more than anybody else does. All we know is that over the last 25 years, it's gone up, and over the next 25 years, we know it's going to continue to go up. Where it's going to be, we don't know. And my question is, and again, we're grateful that you're offering to work with us in this regard, would you be willing to adjust that rate in today's dollars so that today it still works out to be today 75 cents per tonne, but where it would reflect inflation so that if the tonnage does go up, we'll benefit more? And if it does go down, then we will benefit less? I'd be willing to bet that it's going to go up, and I myself would be willing to take that chance that it's going to go up. And I'm just wondering, would you and your board be willing to consider the idea of rather than a flat amount per tonne, have it a floating rate that mirrors the rate of inflation? And through you, Mr. Chairman, that would be my question.
Mr. Fisher?
The discussions that we had with the city, including Mayor Salsi and Mr. McDonald, I think were lengthy around the terms of the arrangement that we came to. And this issue was discussed, but at the end of the day, I think we certainly felt it was fair in an uncertain, what we would consider to be an uncertain pricing environment. And it did go to the board of our company, which are primarily the owners of the company as well, and they gave us some fairly clear guidelines in that regard in terms of the arrangement that we came, we've come to. So I would say to you and answer your question, it would probably be difficult for us to alter those terms at this point in time.
Thank you, councilor.
Thank you, worship. And I can appreciate that's where you're coming from. I'm just going to publicly, you know, say that today this looks like a good deal, but I know in 25 years, depending on where the, I did some rough numbers on where I think the prices were in the early 80s and where they are today, and it significantly decreases the benefit to the residents. And what I feel bad is none of us on this table will probably be here in 25 years, or in this room for that matter. It'll be our kids, and I just want to make sure, it'll be our kids' kids, and I just want to make sure that the deal we put together is fair for everybody. It's not to milk Walker Industries, not at all. You're a good corporate citizen, and you're generous corporate citizen. I just want to make sure it's fair for all, and I can appreciate there's been a lot of discussions going on prior to tonight, but I have a strong feeling that if we're in it together and it's a two-way street, that we can benefit together, and I think that'll be more symbiotic of relationship for the future, and I would stand behind that idea that I think it should mirror, your worship, the rate of inflation.
Thank you.
The one other thing I might add is, I think from the point of view of the company, there was also a certain recognition of the fact that the owners of the company voluntarily today and in the past and have committed into the future into putting significant, what I would think of as significant amounts of money into the community as owners of the business, quite apart from any kind of arrangement like this. And it's true that those flow into the region and across the region, but also historically, you'd find that happened directly into the city of Niagara Falls as well. So that is an element of the company's financial participation in the community above and beyond what you're seeing here.
I should point out, councilor, I think you're aware that the previous council did have this matter brought before them, and it was passed, I think unanimously at the time, that the arrangement would be satisfactory at the time there was negotiations going on, and really led by our CAO. We deserve a lot of credit for that, but there was substantial discussions, Mr. Fisher indicated, between the city and their board, so we did attempt to negotiate that further, just so you'd be aware of that. Are there any other questions from members of council? Okay. At this point, then, the matter with regard to the public meeting with respect to the proposed official plan and zoning bylaw is now concluded, and the council have a preference. Councilor Di Addati?
Yes, worship. I would make the motion that we approve this. However, I would ask that there be one change to the recommendation in terms of the financial implication, that the 7.5 per tonne charge reflect the rate of inflation.
The .75?
That's right.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? Councilor Peter Angelo, I'm not sure now if we can, Ms. Kelly? Is this matter appropriate at this point with respect to the recommendation?
At this point, we certainly have conducted negotiations on the basis of what's set out in the report, although the agreement hasn't been ratified by council.
Okay. Ms. McDonald?
I'm not sure legally, but I'm very uncomfortable with it just from an ethical point of view. I appreciate Altona Di Addati's point, and I am sure the community would appreciate the effort because I think it's well taken. But the fact is, we did negotiate terms that was discussed with the current council, and we've given the board basically every indication that the terms were acceptable. So based on that alone, I'm very uncomfortable if the council passed the motion now to suggest something otherwise. First of all, this council doesn't have the authority to direct Walker Industries to pay any more than they've offered to pay, but the reality is, in good faith, we did bargain. The board approved it, and our council approved it, and so it's a little bit late, in my opinion, to request something like that at this time.
Okay. Councilor?
Well, your worship, this council, the council of the day also made some promises to the downtown group, and we changed that with the new council. As far as I'm concerned, I believe ethically, we owe it to the taxpayers. Ethically, what matters here is what a fair deal is for all the ratepayers, and with all due respect to Walker Industries, I am suggesting, not that they pay more, that they pay the same amount today, except that it reflect the rate of inflation. The tonnage rate, two-thirds of all the waste going into this facility is going to be from out of town, from the rest of the province, from Toronto. You know, they can't even send it to Michigan anymore. You got to send it out to St. Thomas. So what I'm saying is, fine, we're going to offer you a place where you can dump your waste, and the rest of the province is wasted, and you got to pay a fair price. And I don't think 75 cents per tonne and keeping it held at that rate is unreasonable. As a matter of fact, I think it's extremely reasonable. And if it's not such a great deal, you know what? There's, I see a lot of communities around the province that don't want waste to be put in their areas. I travel around the province, I see signs all over. We're going to say, fine, just compensate us and keep it consistent, because a dollar today is not what a dollar was 25 years ago. And I promise you, it won't be what a dollar is in 25 years. So to leave it at 75 cents, I think, would be irresponsible of this council. And whether the decision was made prior or not, doesn't matter, it's irrelevant. You're never too far down the wrong road to turn around and make the right decision. As far as I'm concerned, the right decision is an equal decision. As far as I'm concerned, the right decision is an equal decision, and if the rates go up, we benefit together, and if the rates go down, we suffer together. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Councilor Carrion?
Well, your worship, I'm one of the councilors that had agreed with Mr. McDonald and some of the rest of us that were here, that we would accept the proposal that was put before us by Walker Brothers Industries, notwithstanding Alderman Diodati's idea is probably a good idea to have tried to tie it to the inflation rate, but we've already, we've already been down that path. We already negotiated in good faith, and I'm going to have to stick to my word and honor the deal that we made with them in the past. If this motion doesn't fly, your worship, I'd be prepared to make another motion.
Yeah, thank you. Any members of council? Councilor Inouye?
Hi. I'm a little shocked that we have a lot of councilors come up with a formula to make us more money based on the inflation rate, and now we're talking about being locked into something. I mean, probably it for me to suck and blow at the same time, but we're the same people who came back in a new council and said, you know what, that deal for downtown, isn't that great? He had a very good point on that. Is there not something, or is there a method in the next, say, 10, 15 years where we find the inflation rate has moved so far ahead that we can go back? Or we, as he says, are we locked right into this?
CIO wants to make a comment. Mr. McDonald?
Just, and I may ask Ms. Kelly to comment on this, but I'm not sure it's appropriate. We have a motion on the table relative to the zoning amendments, and I'm not sure this is a planning item, and so you may want to deal with the motion that's on the table and possibly a second motion that would deal with this issue if council wanted to support it. As pointed out, I mean, the agreement hasn't been finalized, and I think the points that we made on it, but I'm not sure it's appropriate to confuse the two issues.
I think that's fair. Councilor?
We certainly wouldn't want to hold up a planning item because of this conversation. I don't think that's appropriate.
Councilor Inouye?
Through you to the solicitors. The deal signed?
Oh.
Okay. It would see-
Excuse me, I think the solicitor wants to make a comment, please.
Through you, your worship. No, the deal has not been signed, and certainly that issue with respect to that deal could, certainly if you direct us with respect to that, we could deal with that and as a separate motion. But you have a planning matter that's before you, which you couldn't certainly, this isn't a planning issue to be dealt, to be considered as part of your planning matters that are on council's agenda as a planning issue. The financial matter isn't a planning consideration. It's simply there as a, in your report as, as a factual background issue.
I think that's an appropriate comment. That's my, my point procedurally. Councilor Diodati, would you wish to withdraw your motion and we can deal with this matter separately?
No, I'm not prepared to. What I want to know is, once we give away our bargaining chips, so where do we sit? So then it's just a matter of negotiating, no, I don't agree to what you said, we've got the zoning anyway, we don't need you any further. I want some more clarification, because once we give away our last opportunity here, our last stand, then what are we, what are we going to bargain with? So I'd like a little more clarification on how we're going to negotiate that.
Okay. A little motion on the floor. Councilor Thompson?
Yes, I, I'd just like to be aware of, in fact, the CIO indicated that the present council had discussed this and was completely aware, I think he meant the previous council, because although I have dealt with Walker Brothers over the many years, this is not something that this council has had a rapport to. And I'm just wondering, certainly if this was a new landfill site, you'd have the entire council chambers overflowing with people in opposition. This has been there for many, many years, it's been accepted. I doubt very much whether you would find a better corporate citizen than the Walker Brothers have been, not only to this community but to the region, and we have an opportunity to have a substantial amount of money come into the coffers, coffers of the city as a result of the negotiations that have been carried out through whoever was responsible. But I'm just wondering, now that this has been brought up, is there other municipalities that benefit financially from landsite, landfill operations? Are we unique? Is this a going rate? There's so many questions here now that this has been brought up. And the other one that really concerns me, if you entrust the staff to negotiate a fair and equitable deal, and then they come back in good faith, and then we end up in this situation, I think that's rather unfair and unreasonable, but the question is appropriate and good, but I would have to have additional information with respect to what else happens throughout the province. What kind of revenues are blamed from other landfill operations, if any? And I don't know, we're kind of in a questionable situation.
Fair question. Mr. McDonald has some background information, and he did address council with that prior.
We did address, your worship, tell them, or Councilor Thompson, that issue, and it's not uncommon at all to have TPP such as this paid to the whole community. It really varies. Each circumstance is a bit different in terms of how it works. At the time, we did do some comparisons. There are some people getting less, there are some people getting more in relative terms, so it's not an uncommon practice. But there isn't one set standard on a TPP.
Can you show us a range, are we at the bottom end, the top end, the middle, or whatever?
Your worship, I can't remember the exact numbers, but we're certainly not at the top end. I would say we're probably in the middle, or we're not close to the top end, my opinion.
Okay. Councilor Inouye and Councilor Maves?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nobody's criticizing Walker Brothers. Maybe we'll take a deeper look at ourselves. I mean, we sat, we worked with staff on this, and not one of us thought at the time to say, wait a second, are we looking at the rate of inflation? Councilor Thompson says if this was a brand-new dump-
Excuse me, I think there's clarification that-
I'd just clarify, we did discuss the rate of inflation, and we did discuss it with the former council, and we did clarify that it was on the table, as were other issues at the time, including the rate itself.
So then the rate of inflation was taken off the table?
What we're saying is, is that when we began discussions, we were looking for a rate other than 75 cents. We were looking for something higher. We were also looking for whatever the figure was to be linked to inflation, and we were not successful to be able to get that with negotiations.
So Walker Brothers said no to a rate of inflation? Because I don't think we would.
The council was aware that we asked for it, and we were, turned down, the answer was no, and they weren't prepared to provide it at the time.
Well, I'm going to just speak one thing Councilor Thompson said. He says if this was going to be a brand-new landfill, you'd have this place packed. People don't read those notices in the newspaper. I think this is the first time most residents will now understand that we'll be taking two-thirds of garbage from other areas in the province, and I think tomorrow's when we're going to start to get the phone calls, not prior to this.
Okay, I have Councilor Maves, Councilor Wing, and Councilor Thompson.
Well, I think, I agree with Councilor Diodati in that I think a 20-year contract, and you're setting a rate of 75 cents. I mean, if this thing really gets out of whack down the road, five years, like, I mean, if there's just a little, little gap, it's one thing, but if 15 years now, 10 years now, the gap's this big, is there any way we can get some sort of a belief in this, some area to negotiate a different rate, or is this etched in stone?
Mr. Collins?
Your worship, I can say as the deal has not been signed, and I guess we can put anything to the board and ask for reconsideration, but the general terms have been agreed to in principle, and that's what's been shared in the report tonight.
Okay, I have Councilor Wing.
Thank you. I have some discomfort arising from the background information that staff has provided, in particular, what we have before us from the Niagara Escarpment Commission. There's a section, actually, it's a couple of sections, on springs and ponds, walkers have submitted a request to amend their present permit to take water at the South Quarry, and there's a lot of discussions, this is all very complicated, so I may not be getting basketball court as well as I'd like, but they're talking about leachate impacts, exceedance issues, compliance issues, the effects of these water quality and quantity issues on the tributaries of the six and eight-mile creeks that are fed by these springs and ponds, the effects of the proposed reduction of water on the escarpment environment in the vicinity of the springs and ponds, and I'm, and I'm a little cloudy on what this is all about, because it is very complex, very technical, but when I look at these red flags and Niagara Escarpment's Commission's discomfort, and I think about all this garbage coming in from other areas of the province, going into this area where they have red-flagged these concerns, I'm very uncomfortable with the proposal before us here. I don't know if staff can comment and explain it any further.
Do you have a particular question, Councilor Wing, with respect to that?
Springs and ponds, what are the implications?
Okay, perhaps our deputy planning director can assist us?
Your worship, I'll give it a thought, and if not, I might call on Mr. Smart, the planner for Walker Industries to assist as well, but certainly the environmental assessment for the certificate of approval that was received from the Ministry of the Environment requires that there be an ongoing monitoring program, and I believe the purpose of that is to, to collect the leachate and so on that would be emanating from this facility so that there would be actually no negative impact on those environmental situations. But certainly there's a requirement that there be an ongoing monitoring program developed and operated by the department.
Your worship, this report was dated July 20th, 2006. That was after the EA was approved, and yet there's still, again, just, I'm just wondering why we have all this concern from the Niagara Escarpment Commission along with, and they keep saying these applications and the application to amend the Niagara region official plan should have been considered at the same time as the environmental assessment application for these landlady. I see this ongoing discomfort from the Escarpment Commission, and everybody is very concerned about, these days, about water quality and, you know, what it means for us in terms of sustainability in the drinking water we consume and, and I have a problem with this.
We'll endeavor to get your questions answered, and I'd like to call on the proponent or his consultant. Mr. Fisher, would your consultant wish to make comment with respect to the process? Mr. Fisher, would you like to explain the process that you went through, through the environmental assessment and the approvals that you were granted, and maybe the concerns that Alderman Wing has with respect to some comments being made?
Sure. I mean, any landfill licensing potentially raises a whole range of technical issues, whether it be air quality, transportation, surface water, groundwater, and that's what environmental assessment's all about, and that's what EA gets to the heart of. This is a process that started in very late 2002, had in-depth consultation from a whole range of stakeholders, including the Niagara Escarpment Commission, who were involved from the outset. All the issues, the whole range of technical issues that I just spoke about and more, including what Councilor Wing has talked about, which are very specific, very specific technical issues, which got a very close look, were all evaluated very carefully, not only by a team of consultants paid for by the company, but also a team of government reviewers, including hydrogeologists, surface water people from the Ministry of the Environment. That, that all rolled up into a technical approval of the environmental assessment, which was granted in November of 2006. So these technical issues in any landfill sighting are a whole range of technical issues, and they have been addressed to satisfaction at the Ministry of the Environment and a range of other stakeholders, in this case, including the Niagara Escarpment Commission as well, who are very engaged and generate a lot of paper through the process, this process. As it relates to permit to take wa, the permit to take water comment, specifically, that permit to take water has been granted, and it was granted as a result of a lot of technical work by ourselves and others and input from the Niagara Escarpment Commission. That program is in place today. It's more relevant to our existing quarry operations than it is to a landfill, but it's been approved, we have it in place, and I can tell you that, that our current monitoring costs to engage in that program are $75,000 each and every year, just for the monitoring for that particular program. On our website or in our office, a whole range of technical documents that address all the issues, all the technical issues that came from this environmental assessment. Those have undergone a lot of scrutiny, and they're available en masse or in pieces to council members if they're interested.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Councilor Wing, does that help?
Somewhat.
Do you have any other questions with respect to the technical aspects? Okay, I have Councilor Thompson, Councilor Carrion, and Councilor Diodati.
Yes, I just want to respond to Alderman, Councilor Inouye's comment. I said if this was a new landfill operation, I've had enough experience with the Health Department for 30 years, that you'd have half of the community here in opposition to it, and she seems to think that because other municipalities are dumping into this, that this is new and unique. Mr. Fisher, what municipalities and how much of the dumping has been outside of the Niagara region to the Walker Brothers over the past years?
To the chair, please, Mr. Fisher.
Sure. About two-thirds of the waste that comes into our landfill site comes from outside the regional municipality of Niagara. However, it's not residential waste, it's not the green garbage bag waste that we all generate from our houses. It's industrial, commercial, institutional waste that comes from a variety of industries and commercial institutions. That's the nature of the business we've been engaged in for the past 20 years. It's how we see our business continuing on in the future. We, we are the, we are the landfill site of choice for what we would reckon to be 80% or more of the industrial, commercial, institutional waste that's generated in Niagara region, so we consider ourselves a part of, critical part of infrastructure for a local industry. As you know, there is a deficit of landfill capacity in this province that's significant to the point where about 4 million tons of waste a year goes to the United States for disposal, and most of that goes to Michigan. So for the region of Niagara, we provide local infrastructure for Niagara industry. What the proposal also calls for in this case is an additional 100,000 tons a year of residential or green garbage bag waste from the region of Niagara, should they require it or want it in the future.
And did you not have periods of ti, of periods in the past where you, for a short period of time, had residential waste coming from some municipalities, or did you-
There was, there was a period substantially, substantially predates me, early in, early in the 1990s, Halton Region had difficulty in finalizing its own environmental assessment for the landfill that eventually was built on Highway 25, and so there was a period of time over a couple of years where residential waste from Halton did come in to the Walker site as a stopgap measure until that EA was approved.
We really have nothing different now with this new program than we had previously.
That's right. Other than, other than our business is really built around industrial, commercial, institutional waste.
Perhaps, Mr. Fisher, you may want to elaborate on the extent of the recycling that your company does do. I know that I had toured that facility a few years ago, but also the endeavor to, you created the landfill such that it's fully monitored, it's lined properly, there are a number of significant undertakings you've made, but would you address that point with regard to the matter of recycling and how much you recycle and the fact that you, there's a substantial amount of diversion? Do we have a target at the region, as you're well aware, and where we sit with respect to that?
We have a range of recycling businesses. If you've been by our site lately, you know, we have, we have a significant outdoor window compost business. We do in excess of 40,000 tons a year, so on a province-wide basis, that makes us a big recycler of organic waste, including leaf and yard waste from the region of Niagara, and including a portion of the source-separated organics waste that is now coming from, the program that's been going on in Niagara for a couple of years. So the separation you do in your kitchen and put it out your curb side separately comes to our site, at least in part. So that's a significant part of our recycling businesses. We've just, we've just commissioned a plant to recycle sewage plant biosolids. It's a joint venture with the region of Niagara. It's a way to limit or reduce the amount of open farm field spreading of sewage sludge. It's a technology we sourced in the United States, uses alkaline stabilization to turn sewage sludge into a, into a fertilizer-grade material that's sanctioned by the federal government. We recycle in excess of 150,000 tons of asphalt and concrete every year. We offer a range of diversion services, source separation services to our industrial client base here in Niagara, and so we pull out wood and cardboard and metal and other types of things from industrial waste streams. We built up and are continuing to build up a significant wood grinding business. We source separate- We source separate wood, we grind it, we use it for a variety of uses. So we think of landfill as the anchor for a range of diversion activities that we're engaged in now and a number that we see as opportunities in the future. For us, it's an integrated waste management system. It can't have one element on its own, they're interdependent. Most of the recycling activities we have, to a certain extent, generate a little bit of residue. Even a compost business will have about 10 to 15% waste materials that would contaminate a final product for sale. And solving a landfill site right next door is valuable.
What percentage would you say you divert from the landfill within the total capacity?
We divert, if you add up all the materials we divert, we divert in excess of 200,000 tons of materials a year from landfill sites.
Okay, thank you very much. We have Alderman Kerrio and Alderman Diadadi.
Your worship, Mr. Fisher's cleared up my question. I thought it might be some misunderstanding that their operation was changing. I assumed, as Alderman councillor Thompson did, that it's the same and that it's just expanding. Thank you. Councillor Diadadi?
Thank you, your worship. I mean, the debate's kind of gone all over the place. The bottom line is nobody has challenged the integrity of the company. It's an excellent company and it's highly profitable and successful and good for them and good for everybody in the region. It's good for everybody. However, all that we're asking for is share in the benefit and we're not asking for a lot. We're just asking to maintain the rate of inflation. I think that's very reasonable. I think, and in fairness to the gentleman from Walkers, I don't expect that they can give us an answer here today, your worship. I'm sure they have to go back to a board. So what I am going to do is withdraw my motion, I'm going to make a motion for deferral and that we give staff two weeks to sit down with Walker and negotiate whether it's a go or a no-go proposal. Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor by councillor Diadadi, seconded by councillor Peter Angelo. I'm concerned that we're not going to confuse the planning matter with a financial arrangement. Ms. Kelly, is that proper?
Yes, that would be appropriate.
Okay. So members of council, any other comments? You have a motion on the floor? Anybody speaking to the motion?
(inaudible).
I'm sorry, that's right. First, it is motion to defer, that's right. Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Please hold your hands up. One, two, three, seven. Okay, motion's carried. Okay, thank you very much. Seven, one, huh? Alderman Kerrio, do you want to be reported as opposed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Members of council, the next item on the agenda has been requested to be deferred. The owner is out of the country, so that application with regard to 9268 Lundy's Lane will come back to us at another time. Can we have a motion to accept that deferral? Alderman councillor Thompson, seconded by councillor Ian Ernie. All those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you very much. Now, Miss Lundy, it's planning matters. We have the matter before us with regard to the implementation plan for the historic Drummingville Community Improvement Plan. Any comments or questions? Move the motion by councillor Wing, seconded by councillor Diadadi. Any questions to the motion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion's carried, thank you very much. Thank you, members of gallery who are here present. The next item is a draft plan, vacant land condominium on Delphina Gardens, Lot 3 and real lots 1, 2, 4 and 5, Plan 205-6753 on O'Neill Street, North Side, east of Dorchester Road. The owner is Wedgwood Builders Limited. Motion to adopt the recommendation?
No.
Moved by councillor Fisher, seconded by councillor Kerrio. Any discussions of the motion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion's carried, thank you very much. The third item on the agenda is the draft plan of vacant condominium, West Meadow, Phase 2, Block 221, registered plan 59M-129, Montrose Road, the west side, north of Alpine. The owner is Wedgwood Builders of Niagara. Move the motion by councillor Ian Ernie, seconded by councillor Fisher. Any discussions of the motion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is a bylaw, the Clean Yard Bylaw, a bylaw to regulate the maintaining of land in a clean and clear condition. I know we have people present who wish to maybe make comment with regard to this bylaw. I understand that Mr. and Mrs. Teriaka are here and also our MPP, Tim Crater. Any comments from council, first of all? Yes, also, we have councillor Smeaton. Yes, councillor Thompson?
Well, I think Mrs. Teriaka wants to speak first and I think that's appropriate, but I'll make some comments after that of a longstanding problem and hopefully we can get some results as a result of the new bylaw being suggested.
Pleasure, council, to have the speakers present their comments first. Councillor Smeaton, seconded by councillor Wing, all those in favor? Thank you. Mr. and Mrs. Teriaka, would you like to come forward, please? Welcome.
Hi, Honorable Mayor, member of city council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Just for the record, would you be kind enough to state your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And you can speak up?
Sylvia Teriaka, 6639 Stanford Green Drive, Niagara Falls.
Good, thank you.
And Honorable Mayor, member of city council, we're happy to be allowed to address our concerns about this new bylaw proposal. We are all for it because we've had a longstanding problem in our area. Stanford Center is a beautiful, well-traveled area with access to highways, parks, schools and part of our street hosts the Stanford Historical Society Heritage Celebration and we have the annual fireman's carnival there. For a number of years, passersby, visitors and friends have been referring to the eyesore next door to us as the junkyard next door. I'm sure that it's becoming a common problem all over the city in a lot of different areas. We thank Mayor Salsi, former mayor Wayne Thompson and past and present members of council and the bylaw inspectors and the city staff and others for their past and continued efforts to keep up our property values and standards. We've spoken to many departments and levels of government in order to help us with our problem. For example, the Fire Department, Minister of the Environment, Health Department, Ministry of Transportation, Insurance Board of Canada, Ministers of Parliament, Regional Council members, and many have supported us in all avenues, but they say that the problem just leads back to the present bylaw being ineffective. Mr. Castrelli, bylaw and legal staff have proposed an amendment to the present bylaw that will close some loopholes regarding the vehicles parked on the grass in the front and back and side yards. I have a few questions, maybe we can answer them later on. What I want to know is, they say that the vehicles can't be parked anywhere but on a prepared surface. Can someone just get a load of stone and pour a pad and just stick the car all over the yard just as they please or will there be some kind of a bylaw pertaining to that? Can a person widen their driveway to accommodate their extra cars and boats and trailers and whatever? How far from the road will they be able to park their vehicles so as not to obstruct traffic so people can get out of their driveway safely? It's said that the bylaw will be enforced on a complaint basis and I've been assured that the city is not out on a manhunt. We need to keep up property standards to all taxpayers, not just those affected by having to comply with the bylaw. They don't have stickers or plates. Also, that the vehicle must be capable of being highway driven. That's not the case. Some have, you know, in the past have been there with no motors, the front is smashed in, no bumpers. Some of the vehicles have been there for so long that the tires are sunk right into the ground. I think you were there, Mr. Salsi was there, Mr. Crater was there, Mr. Thompson's been there, Mr. Smeaton has seen the problems and we've, you know, we've been trying to get something done for several years. In the past, we've had to look at up to 12 or more vehicles being in various states of repair and disrepair, plus a boat and two trailers. There have been cars, trucks, Winnebago and vans that have come and gone. Some have stayed for up to five years or longer, as I say, so long that the tires were sunk into the ground. Vehicles are mostly worked on in evenings and weekends and, but the cold weather has put this activity on hold. At present, in the front, back and side yards on the grass, there are two trucks, three cars, a trailer and a boat and trailer. And in the driveway in the front, there is a car on axle stands and a van that doesn't seem to be driven, no plates. And there are two vehicles being driven. There are also car parts, batteries, et cetera. There are one or two truck caps on the roof of the breezeway and a patio table sitting on top of the breezeway on the roof. In the past, there have been dryer, freezer, you know, various types of car parts. And I had occasion to have to call the fire department because at one point they had four gas tanks stacked up on top of each other right beside the garage and the fumes were coming over towards my tenants and they were complaining that they were afraid that, you know, they were a hazard. And a long time, we saw a car with the motor being revved up so quickly that the motor caught fire. There was a fire under the hood. Staff have tried to enforce their present bylaw, but it falls short because of loopholes. Some people have no respect for their property or their neighbors. That's why we need updated bylaws to protect property values and standards. We need your help. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Teriaka. We'll try to answer some of your questions. I do have comments from councillors, so if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to have Mr. Castrelli, who's the Director of Building and Bylaw Services, answer your questions and we'll have some other questions from council as well. So, Mr. Castrelli, could you address the concerns that Mrs. Teriaka has with regard to the surfaces and setbacks?
(inaudible). (inaudible) bylaws specifically, vehicles that are, things are unplated, parked on the lawn. (inaudible) with regards to all the other issues that you have. Certainly, you have your proper orders. (inaudible).
The concerns were basically, could somebody just repave additional or frontage? There's a limitation to that. Ms. Kelly, could you address this? Okay, all right. Ms. Kelly, maybe?
Through you, your worship. I think the principal concerns that you enumerated were with respect to vehicles that were plated or unplated and whether or not they would be captured within the bylaw and a couple of other specific areas. First of all, with respect to stickered or unstickered vehicles. This bylaw captures both of those kinds of vehicles, whether or not they have plated or unplated. Second of all, one of the issues that you addressed was whether or not this would capture parking surfaces or not. And thirdly, whether or not someone could bring, you know, gravel and put it over the top of the whole surface. As Mr. Castrelli indicated, that would properly be dealt with under the zoning bylaw and Mr. Grilovich could deal with that particular issue. But that is a zoning bylaw issue as to whether or not something would properly be a parking area and the zoning bylaw would have to be looked at as to whether or not that's a surface. But whether or not someone can park on a grass surface, that is captured by this bylaw now quite clearly. And you also referenced boats and trailers and they are captured under this bylaw as well. I think that captured most of it.
Okay, so if someone wants to put more vehicles on the property, they have to make an application to the city zoning bylaw to do so?
No, it's a matter of whether or not they were paving over the surface or putting gravel on the property that you had referenced up front and that would determine, that would have to be determined under the zoning bylaw as to whether or not that was the parking surface, as to whether or not it was parking or whether it was appropriate in terms of it met the tests of it parking.
Ms. Kelly, I think Mr. Teriaka was asking a question of they just paved their backyard, is that permissible because it's not grass anymore and they think that would fall under the bylaw possibly in respect to site plan or not site plan but?
Through you, your worship, yes, that would have to be determined as to whether or not a zoning bylaw.
Mr. Grilovich, could you address that? Somebody chose to pave a portion of their backyard?
In most single family and two-family zones in the city, there isn't a landscape requirement, so if someone chose to create a zen garden of pebbles and rocks, that would be an appropriate landscape. If those same pebbles and rocks became a parking spot, I'm not sure how we could determine the difference between a gravelled area in the backyard. The zoning does contain provisions for a required surface parking area if it's in the front yard. But a property surfaced area in the front yard could include gravel. It doesn't need to be a paved or bricked hard surface type of driveway. So there is a, within the front yard, there is a restriction under zoning now. We would have to intubate something into all single and two-family zones that would require a minimum of certain percentages of the land to be maintained in, I'm going to call it soft landscaping, that would be plant materials. There are some people, of course, who put swimming pools in their backyards and the whole area around the swimming pool is entirely concrete. You know, again, they would be in contention, they would be using, so there are all sorts of exceptions. It becomes quite a bit more difficult than what it might appear on the surface, but it certainly is something that we could investigate, but it has, the current zoning would not address the situation the speaker mentioned. And that is, if someone brought in a load of gravel, coated their entire backyard, would that be a parking area where they could put vehicles? Likely. Because as I understand it, this bylaw is designed to keep cars and vehicles off of grassed areas.
Thank you.
No, that's not good. That's not good, no.
Mr. Teriaka?
That's not good because this, you know, this person, you know, has got a continuous changeover of vehicles. When there is no room to park in the front, then it's parking along the side or the back. There have been, you know, numerous vehicles just, you know, going and coming back, you know, sure that the vehicles don't belong to them. You know, some are there for months, some are there for years. You know, it's an eyesore and I think that, you know, our property standards should help us out with this. Our property standards bylaw, it's not just my location, it's all over the city. There's someone else here I knew who lives in a rural area and he's having the same problem. You know, he's having to look at someone else's junk that they've just abandoned and thrown there and they're not using it. I mean, I could see if, you know, if there was a family of five and they needed five vehicles and they were using five vehicles, you know, and having to go working and things like that. But when you have a single family home and you've got a total of, you know, up to 10, 12 vehicles at a time sometimes, then, you know, it's not appropriate in a residential area, especially when those vehicles are in various states of disrepair and you know that they are considered to be junk by anyone.
And Mrs. Teriaka, we certainly agree. I think we're trying to find a solution that would be proper to be able to enforce this matter. So as you know, we've been working on this for a number of months and years now. We understand your concern and your frustration and as you said, you've been to all levels of government. Certainly, we've investigated the potential. I'd like to ask our city solicitor again, Ms. Kelly, is there anything further we could do to back up the concern that Mrs. Teriaka has expressed about the surfaces being changed from grass to something other that would make the bylaw ineffective?
Well, at this point, certainly some of the strengthening in terms of dealing with parking can be dealt with in the zoning bylaw. And I understand that there has been some discussion with respect to some changes being addressed. discussion with respect to some changes being addressed in the zoning bylaw, and that may assist in some regard. But those will be forthcoming in the future.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Terriaca, I hope that answers your question. At this point, we have a number of councilors who'd like to speak. Okay, so if there's something further, we'll just reserve the right to allow you to come back if you wish, okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Counselor Smeaton, you have your hand up. Yes, thank you very much.
(inaudible)
Yes, please, I'm fully...
These people have been extremely patient, probably more than they should have been over the past few years with this situation. I've never seen anything quite as blatant. I've seen it far out in the country, I think we all have, and we've had some interesting cases. I remember one on Montrose Road that I know Wayne doesn't have any gray, it's still there, but Wayne doesn't have any gray hair, but he could have with that one, and I got some. I think, a very quick survey, we're not the only municipality that has this problem. Two things. It really can get out of hand in a hurry, and the publicity derived from this thing isn't probably going to help, it's going to make it worse. And I think if we do a quick survey, Mr. Mayor, if I might suggest, of other municipalities and how they have handled it, one. Two, you'll probably find that they recommend, they will recommend you test this thing, get it in front of a JP as quickly as possible, because common sense usually does rule in a court environment, and yes, there's some loopholes here, but most appointed to the bench will try and do their best to protect individual property owners' rights, and property standard bylaws are just that. And I don't think we should let this thing go as it has been in the past two or three years. I think it should be put forward. You've got a fairly well-crafted thing here with regards to the percentage of pave over in a backyard, surely we can distinguish, and other municipalities would word it and have bylaws that can distinguish between pool deck area and a paved storage for old junkers. And these people certainly, I think, deserve all of our assistance. And let's check with other municipalities, not just in Niagara, but how they handle it.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Council, I appreciate that. Can I just say another thing that Mr. Costelli is nodding his head, I guess you did, Mr. Costelli, do some surveying, did you?
(inaudible) (inaudible)
And the clerk's reminding me as well that this is a public meeting, so is there anyone else in the gallery who wishes to address this matter? Anyone else who wishes to make their comment with regard to this bylaw? Okay, having seen none, then I'll move on to the councilors. I have Counselor Thompson, Counselor Inoni, Counselor Maves, and Counselor Fisher, and Counselor Diadadi.
Well, I, first of all, sympathize with the Terriacas. This has been an ongoing problem for years, and we go back over the years at similar circumstances where people just don't have any pride in their property, and they don't care about their neighbors. It's kind of strange. We can control through the Gestapo at the Humane Society, they can only have three dogs, and yet we can't control the number of cars parked on a piece of property. I think this is a work in progress. I think that this is a good first step, and I agree with Counselor Smeaton that we move as quickly as possible to get this in the courts, lay charges immediately, and test the bylaw, and where there are any deficiencies, we attempt to do whatever we can to accomplish our objective. But the whole reason here is to get on with it quick and show that this is a no-nonsense issue, and the council is not going to stand up to let it continue on. Hopefully, we can have some success, and I would move the report be approved and the bylaw be dealt with under bylaws.
We have a mover of the bylaw, seconded by Counselor Inoni, and we have a number of speakers yet, so Counselor Inoni, you're next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I know the Terriacas have been fighting this for years now, and we all visited a home, I think it was on Third Avenue last year prior to the election, where the gentleman had the same complaints and was living beside the same disaster similar to the Terriacas, and he was charged, or he wasn't, he was visited by bylaw, and he was given an opportunity to clean it up more times than I can count. I like to see the zero tolerance. But before we move this bylaw, I'd hate to see us move something where we don't have the staff to enforce it. So, before we promise that we're going to enforce this bylaw, do we have enough staff to enforce this type of stringent kind of...
Your worship, we'll definitely enforce this bylaw because while it's around the city, there are very few places really, and it's drawn to our attention quickly, and so we're looking forward to enforcing it.
And that's what I think is most important. The gentleman we dealt with on Third did not believe at the time that we had the bylaw, and I know that we've talked many times on this, counsel, do we have enough bylaw enforcement? And I want to make sure we're not promising something we can't complete.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Maves?
Yes, your worship, I've been by that property several times that Mr. and Mrs. Terriaca are concerned with, and this is shameful, really. It's not only this property, there's a few others. There's another one a couple of blocks over from him that looks pretty bad, and of course the Third Avenue property we've heard about. But I think what we should do is take the Terriacas, Mrs. Terriacas, I think she has that in letter form, do you? And we should take some of those things, maybe we can refine the bylaw with some of these comments of hers, and really get some teeth into this so that we really can shut these people down, because I know none of us would want this next door to us, and I really think we should go ahead with, I think we have to pass this bylaw possibly tonight with putting some more amendments in it down the road to really put some teeth into these things.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Fisher?
Thank you. Number four, fail to maintain land free from grass and weeds over 20 centimeters in height. That's fine, but how far back? I think there's a limit to how far back you need to cut, and we really need the whole property cut, because if you have a lot in this city and you only have to mow back 10 feet, and the rest of it can grow as high as the elephant's eye, it's not going to have this any. Do you know how far back the property has to be cut?
(inaudible)
That hasn't been done in the past. People can only cut back so far, so I do think we need to add that. The full lot has to be cut, city lot.
(inaudible)
Thank you.
Counselor Diadadi?
Thank you, your worship. Couple of questions in regard to the wording of the Act. How about landlord notification in the case where we have a tenant that's not maintaining the property? Will they be notified in a timely fashion, or are they going to wait till the tax bill comes out?
Mr. Costelli? Your worship.
(inaudible)
Counselor?
(inaudible) That's good. Everybody and their brother notify them, and sometimes you almost have to embarrass them, and if that's what we have to do, we have to be a good neighbor. And the second question is, what about repeat offenders? I mean, I know it's mentioned here, especially those, should we have a secondary set of fines for those that just don't take us seriously? Have we given that any consideration through you, your worship?
Yes, Mr. Costelli?
(inaudible)
If there's any, no other questions, we'll call the vote, please, all those in favor. Motion's carried and answered, thank you very much. Thank you. Members of council, we have some members of the gallery yet. I'd like to move up an item if you don't mind. Under the consent agenda, item number three, the Northwest Sanitary Servicing Project proposed agreement with Club Italia, Order Sons of Italy, I'd like to have your indulgence to move that forward.
Exactly.
Yes, anybody can vote, Counselor Thompson and Counselor Maves, okay? All those in favor, move it forward, okay, motion move forward. I'm going to step down from the chair, and I'd like to ask Counselor Wing to take the chair, please.
Okay, the next matter is Report MW 2007-22, Northwest Sanitary Service Area Project Proposed Agreement with Club Italia Lodge Number 5 Niagara, Order Sons of Italy. I understand Miss Jean Grandoni has requested to speak this matter. Jean, please come up.
If you could just state your name and address again for the record.
Yes, I do. How many councilors am I dealing with here?
There would be Counselor Maves, Fisher, Thompson, and then Chair Inoni.
I do have a letter prepared, if I could just put it out there. I have about 14 letters with maps. It was getting expensive, so, and then I have some with out maps. (inaudible) And one more, so. And then I have some that don't have the colored maps, if anyone wants them. My name is Jean Grandoni, I live at Row 4810, Row Route Number 1, Garnier Road, Niagara I am opposed to this project and agreement for the following reasons. Perhaps I should point out at first the map and the pictures. The pictures are the overflow on the, that empties into the Shriners Creek. It's located on the NSNT Old Redway, just next to the Keylor Road Pumping Station, is right here, and then this is a close-up right here, the bottom picture of that pipe that's sticking up with the orange hat on it. And if you turn the, this map, which I quickly drew from the old official plan, but it's mainly to show where I took my water samples. On the 10 Mile here, I took a water sample, you see a circle, the two circles are where I took my water samples on the two different water courses, the 10 Mile and the Shriners. And I will be referring to those in my matter here. I am opposed to this project and agreement for extensions of services to the northwest area for the following reasons. One, there is no health problem to justify extension of urban services outside of the urban boundary where the subject lands are situated. Both regional and city staff admit this. It is illegal under the regional policy plan to extend and expand a sewage system beyond urban boundary unless a declared actual health problem is present. You cannot do this for only a potential problem, which is the way I have seen this continually described. The proposal is illegal due to present overflow situation in the system which feeds the Keylor Road Pump Station. This is the pumping station that is receiving sewage into which the proposed new system from the Club Italia, Regency Motel, Mobile Home Park and Church will empty into. My water test results of August 15th, 2006, show that a major health problem already exists on the Shriners Creek tributary, W53, with Ecoli counts of 51,000 CFU per 100 milliliters without a rain at Keylor Road Culver. CFU is colony forming units, which receives raw sewage overflow from the existing overburdened system. So, in other words, there are overflowing sewage into Shriners Creek from the Front Stone Acres Keylor system, and it's supposed to be getting the sewage from this new sewer. The proposed new system will create an even bigger problem to deal with in the future on the Shriners Creek system. No health problem is evident on the 10 Mile Creek, which has Ecoli counts of 10 CFU per 100 milliliter at Keylor Road Culver. Now, I realize this is one sample, but I'm trying to show what's going on here. The ministry guideline is not to exceed 100 CFU per 100 milliliters, and now, I got that figure from the Conservation Authority, I tried to get it from the Department of Health, MOE, and you just get shoved from one person to another, so the best I could do was to get a figure from the Conservation Authority, from their water person. This shows that there is no health problem to justify the extension of urban services in this case, but clearly indicates a problem on Shriners Creek, which you chose to ignore time and time again. Certain alternatives such as compost or incinerator toilets have not been recognized or investigated that could help the situation, their situation, cheaply and be environmentally friendly. These toilets, through education, could be the toilet of the near future. The compost was even shown on national TV as part of the green push. I am well aware of the history and previous overflow incidents at the Keylor Pump Station and adjacent sewers. And this is history, I realize, but I was an eyewitness to a Keylor Pumping Station flood in 1990 where sewage was dumped onto the nearby field which drained to Shriners Creek. The station was not upgraded until 1998, yet Club Italia was allowed to hook up in 1996 with the small grinder pump system, as far as I'm concerned, making it an illegal connection. I tried to stop this at the local level, but was never notified when they went to the region for approval. Now you are proceeding with more illegal connections. If you are going to declare a health problem on the 10 Mile Creek area, then you will have to declare an even greater health problem on the receiving system, which is the Keylor Pump Station, adjacent sewers and Shriners Creek. Also, if the 10 Mile Creek area is declared a health problem, then you could be requested to immediately extend services everywhere in the region based on insignificant Ecoli counts. The real problem is that landowners simply do not want to spend their money to fix their systems, but instead would prefer to leave the taxpayers by using provincial taxpayer money from the Superbuild Fund in the amount of $262,500. This is not the first time they have gotten grants, and there's been a lot of talk here before the council started at your water sewer rates, and I think this is how it gets started with projects like this. This is what puts an unfair burden on people. It is hypocritical that urban government is initiating strong new legislation and taking legal action against farmers for pollution while developers and cities are free to pollute and destroy the environment. And what you're doing here is going to make the situation worse on the Shriners Creek, because you can't fix all those problems overnight. Impacts of degraded water quality on Shriners Creek, pipes have almost disappeared due to pollution, and they used to come up here, people would pick them out by the bushel. And I was told at one time by Mr. Jack Muir that, and his son is still alive, he could testify to this, that the pipe was so thick you could hardly see the bottom of the stream, and now we have next to none. Loss of spawning habitat is also another reason we've lost the pipe due to filling in the flood. in the floodplain and stream channelization of the watersheds in the northwest area, particularly the Shriners and the Beaver Dams, and piping of one of more of four major tributaries. Cattails are choking parts of the stream, one of the first signs of polluted water as nature attempts to fight back. Several years ago, a couple of conservation workers got sick working in Shriners Creek watershed. In 2005, the city council approved new overflows from the Keylor System into Shriners Creek, and those are the pictures of one of the overflows right there. So why would you proceed to approve additions, knowing that the system is in trouble and that the overflow volumes will increase and further degrade the Shriners Creek and Lake Ontario? Now, I realize Club Italia's already hooked up, but they have, they want to expand with seniors, housing and whatever, and then you want to add the Regency, and I hear rumors that he's trying to sell his property already. Evidence of this in reports MW 2000, well, I won't read the numbers, but evidence of this is in reports, and then I've listed two of them, on flooding and basement flooding. I was not aware of these until the year 2006. Nobody notifies downstream residents and farmers when overflows are installed, as in 2005, where the automatic ones are charging underground. And Counselor Thompson made much ado about notifying people about swimming. Well, we have a right to enjoyment of our property too. The only benefit of notification is for legal purposes. How do you notify a fisher or frog that death is imminent? If all your comments of the past were true about the Keylor System having adequate capacity, then this present overflow situation would never have occurred. Strange how you find money for new development to unnecessarily expand urban boundaries, but not so quickly to fix existing infrastructure problems. The Ministry of Environment advises that if the sewage system is inadequate, a certificate of approval will not be issued. A certificate of approval has not yet been issued, making a draft agreement premature. And I've been in contact with Toronto, so I've been trying to stay on top of this. The Keylor System must be cleaned up to see what its true capacity is already. The next priority must be to reserve capacity for development within the urban boundary. The city, by entering into this agreement, will be contravening the Environmental Protection Act, the Environment Bill of Rights, and the Fisheries Act. I request that council refuse to commence this agreement, and that council request a Health Department report on the Shriners Creek. One thing about the MW Report 2007-22 tonight, it says in the second, well, would be, second paragraph under background, "The city completed a class environmental assessment in March 2003 and ultimately received approval from the Ministry of Environment to proceed with the project on September 16th, 2003." And then it goes on to talk about people wanting expansion to the urban boundary, and I really believe that's what's behind all of this. But one thing you need to realize is that since the approval by the minister, the overflows have come into the picture. And the approvals that they have to give now are for design, but they did say if there's no capacity, that they will not issue it. And I can't see them issuing it, considering the present state of the sewer system that is to receive the sewage from this northwest area. And you're really not just trying to add the Regency and the Mobile Home Park, you want to add two hundred acres of development in here. And it's totally out of line, as far as I'm concerned, because that's what is behind all of this, as far as I'm concerned. It even offends the Planning Act.
Okay, thank you, Gina.
And, excuse me, one more point. The consultants, the pumping station is a regional pumping station, and the, when R.B. Anderson did their analysis of this system, they, the region did not comment to the consultants. Why?
Perhaps staff would have an answer for that, why the region didn't comment.
Your acting worship. Chair, I don't know why specifically the region would not comment on that specific question, but they are a commenting agency on those things, and they would be on the list. Why they did not comment, I cannot give you an answer to that specifically. I would like to comment on a number of things that Ms. Grandoni brought up, and what precipitated all this. And it goes back to a report in November of 2001, presented to this, this council was approved, and it was a result of a Health Department report, which outlined some concerns with the Club Italia and the Regency, and their recommendation was that municipal services be extended out there. To that end, water has been extended out there and built. The next phase of it was to install sanitary sewers. So that was in the Health Department report, yet Ms. Grandoni says there was nothing, and she also references asking the Health Department to come in. We did way back a number of years ago, and that was their recommendation.
I have that report.
Yes, and it's clearly recommended that it be extended.
But there's no order then issued.
No, but that was a recommendation from the Health Department.
But it's all about ifs. If they expand, if they do this, if they do that. It does not deal, that is not in relation to the existing situation, because they've been this size for decades.
All I've got to say is it was recommended in the Health Department report. We asked the region through their planning department to approve the extension of municipal services, and the region did.
Okay. Mr. Dulevik, has the certificate of approval been issued?
No, a certificate of approval has not been issued, has been applied for. However, as Ms. Grandoni says, we've gone through the EA, we've come to this council on several occasions with various aspects of hiring consultants to do the environmental assessment. That was presented back in 2003, March of 2003, which was approved by this council. Ms. Grandoni asked for a bump-up request to the minister, that was denied, hence, we received approval in September of 2003. Following that, council approved the hiring of the consultants, R.B. Anderson, to do the detailed design for the pumping station enforcement. So we've been going all along with the various steps in proceeding with this work to go ahead with this pumping station.
Okay, can you comment on whether or not the sewage system is adequate to handle this? It's been suggested that it's not, that a major health problem exists on Shriners Creek because we have raw sewage overflows from the system?
Ms. Grandoni is correct, we did install the pump at the Keylor Road Pumping Station as a result of the issues with Lexington. However, that installation was done, it's never been operational. As, that was our first reaction in trying to look at doing some quick numbers, saying we needed a pump there. As it turns out, as a result of the more detailed work that's been done as part of the Keylor Road EA, Pumping Station EA, that'll be available in approximately April and May, that we'll be making a presentation to council. What they determined by the monitoring, you'll never have to pump at that location. So in effect, the work we did was not necessary. Where we are having the problem is at Lexington Court, where we have been doing the pumping there during weather events.
And so it's the Lexington Court that's contributing to this raw sewage overflow?
That's where we initiate the pumping out there, yes.
So this connection that's before us now is not going to increase the...
At the moment, all the stations being built for is the service Club Italia, the flows that are being generated now, which they are pumping at this moment, as Ms. Grandoni indicated earlier, they do have a grinder pump system that has been hooked up, and that is tributary to the Keylor Road Pumping Station. I'd like to reiterate that the Keylor Road Pumping Station does have adequate dry weather flows to accommodate this development. With respect to the future expansion of the two hundred acres, that will be subject of a separate planning decision, they'll have to do the appropriate studies to try to expand the urban area boundary. That will take years if they can get the approvals at all, but I'll leave that to Alex Trulovic to comment further on that.
Okay, perhaps Mr. Dulevik.
Yes, your acting worship, the city is currently working with consultants on our growth plan for the city, and one of the areas that is being investigated is this northwest area relative to our future growth, and so that will be addressed through that study, they'll be coming back to this council later date.
Would this proposed sanitary service area project have any impact on what you have just outlined?
They're looking at the needs for residential development, and under the provincial growth plan, they have to look at intensification and conversion of lands within the urban boundaries first. So that's the primary focus of that report, but because of the, we have an application actually in our office, it's not active, but it's been in our office for about five years, for an urban boundary expansion to this area, we asked the consultants to also look at this area, but there's nothing concluded, and certainly the idea of extending services into this area was to address the health issues that Mr. Dulevik mentioned, and not for the purposes of urban boundary expansion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dulevik. Are there any questions from members of council from Ms. Grandoni? Counselor Thompson?
I have a question for Mr. Dulevik. The pumping station, the size of that pumping station, is it being built big enough to handle the, the urban area, the proposed urban area between the Tower Line to Mountain Road or to Montrose Road?
Mr. Dulevik?
Yes, your acting worship, yes, the station can accommodate future growth if it was, were expanded, but just because it's built that way doesn't mean that growth will take place. As the planners indicated, it has to go on its own planning merits, not because that they're servicing in place for it.
Thank you.
Could I have a comment on that? You people are all talking about the high cost of sewer and water rates. Why would you build a pumping station when, bigger than what you need, when you don't know whether you're going to get approvals to use it? That's where the cost goes up to the taxpayers.
Through the, through your acting worship, the cost here, other than what is coming from Superbill, the remaining cost is going to be paid by Club Italia, that's the reason for the report here tonight. The cost, once you're going into the ground, it's minimal for the extra sizing. The real first cost, pump costs are actually going and building a pumping station in the first place. Building it extra capacity becomes a very small percentage of that.
Okay, thank you.
Superbill is taxpayer money. But could I say one more thing? Mr. Dulevik, you said that I asked for the Health Department to come in, and that you already did it. I'm asking for the Health Department to come in on the Shriners Creek, and they've never done it. And we've been getting sewage for thirty, forty years, and now it's getting worse. Some of the tributaries have been cleaned up, like the W51, I think that's the only one.
Okay, Ed, could you please comment on the Shriners Creek?
Now, this, what you're doing here is going to give us a dirtier system. We're just going the way we...
Gina, ask her to comment on...
With respect, you misunderstood what I said about the Health Department. You said that there was no justification on why the pumping station was being installed for Club Italia. What I said was that we did have a Health Department report, which you seem to dismiss, yet you are asking the Health Department to come in to address other concerns that you have.
The Health Department report is full of ifs. If they expand, they need...
Well, all I can say is that the regional planning accepted that to allow the expansion of services to Club Italia.
Jean, we can only deal with what's before us.
They called, the region called it a potential risk.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other members of the gallery who would like to comment on this matter? Ms. Gilberti?
Thank you, Madam, Madam Actuall, Mayor. On behalf of Club Italia, I just want to address a few quick issues, because the night's going on. I do have a copy of the report from the Regional Department submitted by Mr. Cambrey, and if I could just quickly read two paragraphs, which will summarize exactly what Mr. Dulevik has indicated. Summary, "The region has received a request from the City of Niagara Falls for approval to extend water and sewer services to four landowners within an area known as the Northwest Quadrant. This area is bounded by Keylor Road to the west, Mountain Road to the north, Montrose Road to the east, and an Ontario Hydro Corridor to the south. The regional Niagara Public Health Department undertook a survey in 2001, and based on their survey, concluded that the installation of municipal sanitary sewers and municipal water was recommended as a long-term servicing solution for these properties. Following receipt of the report, the city forwarded a copy to the regional planning department requesting that service extensions be permitted beyond the urban area boundary in this particular instance to service the properties that were experiencing failures in their water and sewer systems. Subsequently, a meeting was held with the property owners, officials, and staff from the City of Niagara Falls and regional staff. The regional policy plan states that municipal sewer and water mains may be extended outside the urban boundary where it is required to correct an existing health problem. On this basis, it was agreed at the meeting that the regional planning department would support the extension of municipal services to resolve the health problems, but only for the existing development. These servicing problems are a clear reminder of the difficulties that can arise when urban-type development is allowed to proceed in an isolated incremental fashion without an approved comprehensive land use and servicing plan." That report was January 30th, 2002, which was then approved at regional council level on February 7th, 2002, and a letter from David Farley was sent to the clerk, Mr. Ira Fida, confirming that. The survey was undertaken in August of 2001, and there are letters from the four property owners indicating that it is to address only the existing servicing problems. And as Mr. Dulevik has indicated, the costs that are required to complete this undertaking at this time, aside from the Superbill Fund of $262,000, will all be undertaken by Club Italia, and all we're, all we're requesting tonight is to commence the procedure to enter into negotiations with the, with the city in order to enter into this front-ending agreement, so that we can take advantage of the Superbill Fund that has been allocated for this particular northwest quadrant for this reason.
Thank you very much for the clarification. Are there any questions?
I don't have any questions, because I guess I've lived through this personally for the last, I don't know how many years, complaints, sewage problems from the Regency Hotel. Originally, the Club Italia only had a holding tank, and for years, we're having constant problems of overflows on New Year's Eve and other times when they had massive people out there. So it was, in fact, a definite health hazard. Numerous years ago, the force main was approved to at least solve the problem for Club Italia with the massive amount of sewage that was created there on a periodic basis. Mr. Harvey Ho, and I heard the comment that Mr. Ho has a Regency up for sale now. Mr. Ho has suffered a stroke in the last few years, and has finally come to the point, with the frustrations of sewage problems, his lack of opportunity to expand because of the sewage problems, has decided that he would at least look for someone to acquire that property and move on with his life. The trailer park is, has been a problem with septic tank and tile beds just don't work, and heavy clay soil, they should never have been there in the first place. I spent half of my life sampling ditches out there and know exactly what was going on, particularly with the Regency Hotel. The church on Montrose Road, similar problem with sewage problems. And how did the Health Department get involved? I called them and asked them to do a sanitary survey of the area to determine if, in fact, there was a health hazard there. They did the sampling, they came back with a report, and they very clearly indicated that there was sewage discharging in the open, it was a health hazard, and it was something that had to be rectified. And it can't be rectified by small properties. Club Italia, of course, is a different situation, but the Regency Hotel, the homes along the area there, always suffering from periodic sewage problems. So here we are, a situation that can only be solved by one way, and that's the extension of sanitary... can only be solved by one way, and that's the extension of sanitary sewers. The expansion of that particular area is probably so far away from this council dealing with that it probably won't happen, most of us won't be here. So this is something that has been ongoing for years. Club Italia with their sewage pumps has been a constant problem, burning out the pumps because of the small diameter of the forced main. And it's something that you have to come to reality and deal with. It's, it's the only solution. They could go out there and put in a tile bed. In fact, there were estimates of a sewage system for Club Italia to accommodate their needs probably ten or fifteen years ago, which was in the area of three or $400,000. What it would be today, I just have no idea. So we have an option. What would you rather do? Put it into the ground in a, in a private sewage system or extend the sewers and pick it up so it isn't going into the ditches? So there's no opportunity for it going into the creeks and solve the problem? Because that place, that whole area out there, where there is development, the Regency, the campground, the residential properties, Club Italia, the church over on Montrose Road are all having problems and are all discharging sanitary waste into the open, which is a health hazard. So the record is clear. The report was done in 91. It's followed through this council week after week after week, year after year, with the approvals and the progress going on. Now we're here at the final stage to take advantage of $200,000 and some odd thousand. But if we don't get it to go here, it's going to go to some other municipality to solve some of their sewage problems. So in my opinion, let's, let's clean up the area and maybe it's going to clean up some of the creeks and some of the area that, that Ms. Grandone is concerned about.
Are you moving the recommendation then?
And I will move the recommendation.
I see, I see. Were you seconding that?
I agree with that. And I, and I think that that whole area, as Counselor Thompson mentioned, it needs to be updated. And I think this, especially doing the oversize, there's probably going to be growth out there anyway. And I think we're, we're going to be ahead of the game by doing that.
I think it's, Ms. Gilberti pointed out when she, in one of the paragraphs she read to us, this is what happens when you have pockets of intense development outside the urban area.
Very quickly, I want to make something very clear. Twice tonight, it talked about 25 years from now, would I be here? Yes, I will be here. My family are all people who lived over 100 years old. So count on me, I'll be here.
Okay. I'll call the motion then. All in favor? All three, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Where's the rest of the camera stuff? If they don't get back in here quickly, I'll move on to the next report.
All power corrupt.
What is the next report?
Mayor's Report.
Oh.
Mayor's Report.
Sure. Members of council, I'm going to move on with the agenda. In the next part of the agenda is the mayor's reports, and I'm going to begin the, our report on the state of the city. I'd like to take this opportunity reflecting the progress of the year past and the challenges of the years ahead. The 2003, 2006 council identified strategic issues for the city, which included infrastructure rehabilitation, transportation, community recreation facilities, new development and redevelopment, and quality service. And I am proud of our council and the gains that we've made. It will require all of us to remain focused and make intelligent decisions in allocating our resources to reach our objectives going forward. As everyone is aware, our city's infrastructure is aging and there's a need to make significant investments to maintain, maintain it in a state of good repair. In 2006, the city invested an unprecedented $50 million in infrastructure development and rehabilitation. I would like to mention a few examples of key projects included in this investment. It is clear that we need to reduce the amount of untreated sewage going into our local waterways when a storm event occurs. The high-rate treatment facility being constructed in conjunction with the regional municipality of Niagara is now 80% complete. The city's $10.5 million investment in this project will reduce the amount of overflow into the Niagara River by over 60%. Another $7 million was spent on the construction of Storm's Street on Park Street to reduce the basement flooding and overflows to the environment for the area bounded by Morrison Street, Stanley Avenue, Hamilton Street, and Victoria Avenue. Through the diligence and resourcefulness of our staff, we were fortunate to have excess of provincial and federal funding to offset over $9.5 million of infrastructure expenditures. We've also implemented innovative technologies involved in programs such as lateral relining, photonic protection, and video sewer inspection, and new equipment such as the regenerative waterless street sweeper to improve our efficiency and effectiveness. We made good progress in 2006, but the infrastructure challenge is great. The city requires $22.8 million for the reconstruction of roads that have deteriorated past the point of rehabilitation. And a further $88 million needs to be invested in the water and sewer infrastructure. In terms of the second strategic issue, transportation, we continue with environmental assessments to make improvements, road improvements at rail crossings, and the long-awaited widening of Dorchester Road between Morrison Street and Highway 420. These initiatives will respond to the increased traffic levels resulting from new development in the area. Good work does not go unnoticed, and the Robert Street Gateway Project received the 2006 Project of the Year Award from the Ontario Public Works Association. This was a collaborative effort between the region, Niagara Parks Commission, and the city to create an entrance to the city that we can all be proud of. The third of council's strategic issues is a community recreation facility. 2006 saw the first full year of operation of the McBain Community Center, for which the city received the Award of Excellence from Parks and Recreation Ontario because all aspects of the facility, including development planning and the current use, reflected a true partnership and cooperative dedication to meeting community needs. Council reaffirmed their commitment to move forward with a multi-pad arena complex as a result of the major feasibility studies, consultation with user groups, and an extensive site selection process. Although we were distracted with other opportunities that impacted on the project timing, we're now moving forward with renewed commitment to the project. New development and redevelopment is the fourth of council's strategic issues. Council and staff continue to work diligently on marketing studies, business plans, and environmental assessments for the revitalization of downtown. The citywide Brownfield Community Improvement Plan, CIP, was the first completed in Ontario and a recipient of a community design award from the Niagara region. As leaders in this area, the city hosted an International Brownfield Summit this past June. The historic Govanville CIP has been completed and is pending approval that will allow us to continue our quest to revitalize the main and ferry business district. We look forward with optimism to development of the Niagara Convention and Civic Center, an essential piece of tourism infrastructure, which promises to be a benchmark of public-private partnership. Family entertainment attractions which opened this, this year in Niagara Falls included the Great Wolf Lodge Resort, the Fallsview Water Park, the Great Canadian Entertainment Themes, a theme park, Skywheel, and Cirque Niagara's Avea. City staff, along with numerous partners, played a pivotal role in hosting live with Regis and Kelly in Niagara Falls for the 2006 Victoria Day weekend. The television event attracted media exposure for the city, valued in excess of $3 to $4 million in the U.S. marketplace. After years of speculation about its fate, we welcome the redevelopment of Niagara Square with the addition of several major chains. The industrial sector highlights include Phase One of a $21 million, three-phase expansion for Vincore International and an expansion of Star Warning Systems. We're also in the process of extending municipal services to our Montrose Road Business Park to create more development opportunities in years to come. Quality service is the final issue. I can think of no better example than our city's fire service, who in addition to exemplary performance of their everyday duties, have emerged as national leaders in locating, prosecuting, and ensuring remediation of marijuana grow operations. A new fire station was constructed for volunteer firefighters to better, better serve the Proland area. And this is an encouraging and optimistic time for Niagara Falls. 2006 saw a city poised on the verge of great things to come, but with the promise of great things come great challenges as well. As we make Niagara Falls a better place to live, our greatest challenge is our budget and finding the right balance. We need to consider major capital expenditures such as the community arena complex, the downtown revitalization, strengthening Niagara Transit, and the pending multimillion-dollar request from the Boys and Girls Club of Niagara Falls. All the while, mindful of ratepayers' ability to pay. We need to continue to pursue fair taxation for our industry, and we need to recognize the increasing challenges facing our tourist sector and the impact on our tax base. The public sector accounting board, the PSAB, has introduced new roles for municipal financial, financial reporting, and we are required to comply by January 2009. This is a significant shift in a, in a procedure, and as a result, will place additional demands on staff and resources over the coming years. We must continue to invest and find innovative ways to address our aging infrastructure. And we must work to find administrative efficiencies and new methods of service delivery that will help us not only achieve our, our budget objectives, but more importantly, ensure that we continue to deliver better frontline services to all our citizens. And to this end, we will continue to review and evaluate services throughout the corporation. And finally, it is incumbent upon us all, council, city staff, and the public, to continue to work together for a future where residents and businesses can enjoy a prosperous quality of life in our great city. Thank you. Also, members of council, I'd like to advise you that I've been advised by our member of provincial parliament that Minister John Garretson will pay a visit to my office on Wednesday at 2:30 PM, this March 7th. This has been arranged, as I mentioned, by our NPP. If there's any issues relevant to municipal affairs, I'd please like to hear them. If you'd let me know, we'd be glad to raise them with the minister. And we've asked staff to do the same. So please be advised. And if you have anything that I can carry forward to the minister, I'd be glad to do so. Thank you. Under Communications and Comments of the City Clerk, are there any additional items at this point for consideration?
Just feel the be.
Okay, we'll get the agenda. First of all, the Downtown Board of Management requests to approve, to approve the election of officers to the Downtown Board of Management. You have a list. Counselor Ianone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see on this list that the top Officer B is listed as Aaron Lickman. My understanding, and I threw you to the clerk, is that one of the bylaws state that you have to be electable to office of City Council to be able to hold a position at the BIA. So I would think that if that's true, we should be deferring this, send it back to the BIA and ask them to amend this, because I don't think Mr. Lickman is eligible to sit there.
Mr. Fieda would like to comment with respect.
Through the chair, I'm not aware of anything in the municipal act that would preclude that, but in the Downtown BIA's own constitution, they speak of qualifications to sit on the board, and they say, obviously, the council rep, but also remaining members shall be persons qualified to be elected members of council who are owners of ratable property in the improvement area, which is, which is the prescribed business property class or tenants of owners who have been identified. In fairness to the Downtown Board, this is pretty well a cookie cutter type of constitution that I believe many of the BIAs in the, in the city follow. If they are aware of that, obviously, they didn't pay heed to it, but, and you know, I have no idea what Mr. Lickman's citizenship is, but my assumption is that he couldn't run for municipal council. Whether it's valid for them to have that in their constitution, I'm not going to make that judgment tonight, but based on what their qualifications say, I guess the question could be asked.
So, Counselor Ianone?
It's asked, and I asked that somebody be sent back to the BIA for them to clarify amongst themselves. And I understand, Mr. Mayor, that you're going to be our representative on the Downtown BIA. I might suggest to them also that they don't hold their annual meeting or their election of officers on a night that you're chairing a meeting at City Council. Mondays on a council meeting are not going to work for us, for us to have representation there. I'd also say that I have a concern with the election of officers. While I know it's cookie cutter and it's put before us, when you look at the number, we've made comment that Mr. Lickman owns 40 properties. When you look at the names of officers here, most of the officers either are leasees of Mr., or leaseors, I'm not sure how you do that, of Mr. Lickman and/or he has options on those properties. So I don't see a whole lot of objectivity on this board, and perhaps that concern can be put back to them also.
Do you wish to make a motion?
So I move it to be turned back to the BIA with no decision from council with clarification on those matters.
With respect to those two issues?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion by Counselor Ianone, seconded by Counselor Wayne. Any discussion to that? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried unanimously. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is 1B, is the Downtown Board of Management request to waive fees associated with the road closure for the candlelight stroll held in December. That's Counselor Ianone.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As, as in the report, the clerk highlights that we only do this for the, the first-year kickoff. I would say I think the Downtown BIA has an abundance of money, as indicated in the ads they ran in the last year's election, and I suggest they use their own funds to do so. So I move denial.
Moved denial, seconded by Oliver Diadati. Sorry, seconded by, is there a second? Counselor Wayne? Okay, any comments? Okay, it's Counselor Diadati.
No, Your Worship, I'm simply going to vote against this one because I believe it's a Winter Festival of Lights event, and I think anything we can do. I know at this event, this candlelight stroll is in its infancy. Niagara Lake has become quite popular, and the first year went, was very, very successful in Niagara Falls. I think it's a sign of good things to come. And I know Winter Festival of Lights is in their 25th anniversary, where they are hoping to do some pretty big things this year, and I don't, wouldn't want to put any extra obstacles or roadblocks in front of that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Wayne?
Just to note, a couple of the staff comments, money from BIA budgets are routinely used for such events. Apparently, the Downtown BIA was to be paying the bill. And also, we have some information from staff pointing out that council did not assist with costs for the 2006 Candy Cane Lane Run. They only, we only helped with 2005. That is the standard here. We will help with the first year, not with the second or any subsequent years. And these are both Winter Festival of Lights events.
The clerk is just making a point. Mr. Clerk?
This is the first year of this candlelight stroll event. It is another sort of Winter Festival of Lights type of event, but it's the first year that they did the candlelight stroll downtown as far as I know.
Okay, any other comments? Counselor Thompson?
Yes, I just want to express my displeasure with respect to the fact that Mr. Barrish is not one of the people on board. I've been waiting for months for him to appear at council to make his comments or presentation. I've got all of the minutes of the Downtown Board of Management that I've been carrying around with me for the last three or four months, and some of the comments made in there. Hopefully, the board, when they reconsider, will put Mr. Barrish back on so he can come to the council meeting, so I can have the opportunity to ask some pertinent questions with respect to his involvement and his activities in the early months of this term.
Okay, any comments? We have a motion on the floor. Ready for the vote? All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, opposed? One. Thank you. The motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is item number two, A. N. Meyer's 50th reunion celebration request to proclaim the week of April 23rd to April 29th, 2007, as A. N. Meyer Week in Niagara Falls. Oliver Diadati, Counselor Diadati, sorry.
Yes, Your Worship, just before I make the motion that we do in fact acknowledge the reunion celebration proclamation for A. N. Meyer Week, being a member of the reunion committee, I wanted to plug this really quickly. This April, Friday, April the 27th to Sunday, April the 29th, will be A. N. Meyer's 50th reunion. We're calling on all A. N. Meyer alumni from around the world, and we've been getting contacted from all over the world. The major event will be the gala event at the Casino in the Ballroom, which is quickly selling out. We anticipate, just based on the amount that we sold already, a full house. There will be no tickets at the door or that night. If you don't purchase in advance, you won't be able to go. Also, there's a lot of surprises planned. I mean, we're looking at a reunion of Honey Moon Suite, Lennox. We've got a lot of interesting, we've got a lot of variety show talent from years gone by that should have remained that way, but we're bringing them out of retirement. We've got a lot of neat things. The best way to find out about what's going on is to go to the website, which is annmeyer.ca. And from there, you can, you can register for all the events, you can purchase tickets. But I would mention that the event is selling out very quickly, and we're looking to continue keeping the purple proud and the white pure. All right, well, at least we'll keep the purple proud, and I appreciate your indulgence. Thank you, Worship.
Thank you. Sure, we have Counselor Maves and Counselor Carrion.
Here we go.
Okay, Counselor Carrion.
Do you have to be a member of the A. N. Meyer alumni, or can any of the people go from any other school that used to beat A. N. Meyer consistently? To re-attend as well?
Well, if there, if there was such a group, then we would invite them. But no, no, we're all-inclusive, and we'd like everybody to come, regardless of your colors.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Counselor Diadati, seconded by, who was that? Counselor Maves, okay.
Well, if there was such a group, then we would invite them, but no, no, we're all-inclusive, and we'd like everybody to come, regardless of your colors.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Councilor DiDaddy, seconded by, who was that? Councilor Maves, okay. Any further discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Next item is the Fresh Air Fund request to proclaim March 20th, 2007 as Fresh Air Fund Day in Niagara Falls. Moved by Councilor Fishers, yes, seconded by Councilor Ianone. Any comment? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the opportunity to call Eileen Lucas, hers is the number at the bottom of this page, because my family's going to host. One of the children from New York, and we have our host interview next week. But I will say that in speaking to her, she did say that Niagara Falls used to be a thriving community where a lot of kids had host families in Niagara Falls, and right now, she's only sitting at maybe five or six. We, we used to have, it's called a friendly, a friendly municipality title, because we hosted the requisite number of kids, and she said that seems to have fallen off in Niagara Falls. So I asked people to, to check the website, www.freshair.org. She explained to me that, that going to the communities and have, in this Fresh Air organization gives kids of New York City who don't otherwise have a park to play in, their parks are concrete jungles, even in the bottom of apartment buildings, there's very little grass for kids to play on. And she says sometimes this is the only opportunity they have to see this type of neighborhoods. So I really encourage families in Niagara Falls to take a look at hosting some of the kids. We pass this resolution every year here, and it doesn't seem to be resonating with the public, so I hope that people take a deeper look into this.
Good idea. Thank you. Any other comments? Having seen none, I'll put the question, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Nancy. Mr. Clerk, additional items?
Your worship, there is one additional item that I draw at council's intention. Halfway through your package, there's a correspondence from Broderick and Partners, and it's, it's carrying up the council's intention from the last meeting, as you're aware. Council appointed Counselors Ianone and Thompson to the Board of Directors for Niagara Falls Hydro Corporation. In order to allow that to happen, a resolution must be signed by all the directors, and as you are aware, you are all the directors, so we do have a resolution that will pass around and get your signatures, should you pass the resolution, which I would suggest you should, because that was your intent based on your, on your appointments made at the last meeting.
So, members of council, we have a resolution to appoint members to, members of council to the, to the Board of the Niagara Falls Hydro, Inc. Moved by Councilor Fishers, seconded by Councilor Carrio. Any discussion to that? Having seen none, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Motion's carried, Nancy. Thank you very much. And you can circulate the resolution, if you would, Mr. Clerk. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is appointment matters. We have a request for appointments to the Niagara District Airport, and I believe members of council have received a recommendation from, from a review committee. Members of council, we're following the procedure as prescribed in our agreement between municipalities, the former municipalities that actually support and control the Niagara District Airport. The clerk is now circulating the ballots.
Yes. Yeah, I just wanted to say, like, before the ballots are collected, that I don't think that I've ever seen, I guess, a slate of applicants that have been as qualified as this time. Going down the list, I think that there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine of them that hold a pilot's license. Half dozen of them are owners. Others have quite extensive, I guess, experience in regards to airports, airport commissions. I mean, it is very difficult to pick just two out of this slate, your worship. I don't know if it's possible, but are we allowed to have a spare on the commission as well? Because I certainly would like to vote for at least a third person that would be able to go if one of them...
The municipal agreement, I understand, does not provide for that provision, and I know that Councilor Wayne had a chance to review the matters as well as myself, or CAO. Mr. McDonald, can you make any comment with respect to that?
Your worship, just to reinforce what you're saying, I mean, we do have an agreement with the other communities, three other communities are involved, and I think if we deviated from that, it would really cause a problem with the other communities, so I would suggest there's no provision at all to appoint a third person at this point. We'll bring it back to a man agreement in the future, but not right now.
Yeah, but that sounds good, your worship. Perhaps I'll pass a motion that, that the airport commission be asked whether or not a spare would be possible, and if they would agree to one, then I would be more than happy to put one of these other people, your worship, on as a spare.
Possibly the runner-up could be that person, if, as an alternate?
That's fine, your worship. I would make that as a motion.
As you know, each municipality does provide two, two representatives, but we could certainly ask that, so if you make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Seconded by Councilor DiDaddy. Any comments with regard to the motion? No? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? Two opposed. Okay, the motion's carried. So we'll, we can make that request, but it's not Captain Stone, and we'll have to record the alternate as well. While the ballots are being counted, we'll move on to reports. Ratification of Corporate Services Committee actions. I'm going to ask Councilor Peter Angelo, the chair, to report, please.
Thank you, your worship. Following items that will be ratified from tonight's meeting of Corporate Services. First, at the minute of February 19th, be adopted as recorded. Second, your worship, that staff be directed to investigate the following changes to the water billing process. First, commencing in 2007, that interest is going to be paid on tenant water deposits. Second, the supply of water for a tenanted water account may be shut off when the tenant fails to provide or continue to provide the required deposit in full. Thirdly, the supply of water to a property with a tenanted water account will be immediately shut off when the tenant vacates, unless the owner has supplied written direction prior to the shut off for the continuation of the account in the owner's name. The cost of the shut off, your worship, which is $40, will be the responsibility of the property owner. The supply of water to a property will be turned on when a new account is established by a new tenant or the property owner, and the new account holder has provided the appropriate reconnection fees and deposits. And the last part of this, of this particular motion, your worship, that the Finance Division hosts an open house to inform landlords and tenants of the proposed changes. Next report, your worship, that the 2007 municipal utility budget be approved, and that staff report back on the validity of the suggestions for alternative water and sewer rates as provided by Mr. Belowski. And the last item, your worship, that committee provide a letter supports the region and the school board on behalf of Mr. Papavassilou for the return of the overpayment of property taxes due to an incorrect assessment, and I would still move the minutes, your worship.
Moved by Councilor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councilor DiDaddy. Any discussion? Councilor Ianone?
I'm, I'm confident, Mr. Lettich.
Okay, so noted. Any other comments? Having seen none, all those in favor? Thank you. Ratification has been complete, and ratification in camera actions. Mr. Clerk?
Through, your worship, there are a number of items from in camera. First item regarding declaration of surplus and offer for sale to 1251600 Ontario Limited, Part II on reference Plan 59R-9107. That was the one related to the property, I believe, Mount Road, standing? Portage? Portage, sir. That, that Part II on reference Plan 59R-9107, the subject lands be declared surplus and offered for sale by way of direct sale to the abutting owner, 1251600 Ontario Limited, for the appraised price of $30,000, and further that the abutting owner pay for all costs associated with the sale. As regards to the next item, WP Leasing Corporation proposed purchase from the city, part of Part I and Part II on 59R-13115, that staff be directed to proceed to negotiate and accept an offer for sale of property to WPW Leasing Corporation in the Montrose Industrial Park at a price of $50,000 per acre plus GST, such other items and conditions to the satisfaction of the city solicitor. And third item, with regard to Brookfield Properties, the council authorized the mayor and clerk to execute a confidentiality agreement with the owners and managers of 4342 Queen Street, and that's a handout by law that was in your package this evening.
Okay, Councilor Carrio.
Your worship, I'm going to declare conflict on the first item, the one that had to do with the numbered company, as I know.
Thank you. So noted. Okay. Pleasure, council. Motion? Move the recommendation. Councilor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councilor Maves. Any discussion to the motion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. On the consent agendas, we have, item number three has been dealt with, and the remaining items, are there any items that members of council wish to have lifted? Councilor Carrio?
Your worship, I have a question on one of the items.
Okay.
On the Downtown Revitalization Update Strategy, I noticed at the end of the report that it says it has anticipated that the market and business case analysis will be completed by the end of March. Is there any reason to suspect that it won't be? I asked this question last council meeting, but, by the way, that's worded, is there any reason to expect that this won't be done by the end of March? And if won't be, I'd like an explanation why.
Mr. Hurlich or Mr. McDonald?
There was a meeting, your worship, last week, which I didn't attend, I think Alec wasn't there either, as I'm looking at that. So I haven't heard any reason why it would not be done by the end of March. I know we've been tinkering a bit with the terms just to broaden scope, but I haven't heard any reason to suggest that it would not be done. Thank you.
Okay. That, Councilor Ianone?
And just while we're just dealing with the, the housekeeping and the downtown revitalization, the last council passed a motion, and if Mr. McDonald can just highlight it to me, if I have it right, that all surplus lands be sold to Historic Niagara. Is that motion still on the books?
Mr. McDonald?
Your worship, there was a motion to move forward to the sale land, and it's still on, we haven't rescinded that motion. But on the other hand, of course, we don't mind, staff have not taken any action in that regard.
Through you to the clerk, then, do I need a motion to reconsider that, Mr. Clerk?
Clerk?
I mean, it goes down to the, you know, sort of a philosophical discussion whether you have to do a reconsideration on something from a prior council, because I think that would have been the motion of the last council in October, if memory serves me correctly. It's not the same council, so if it's not the same council, then you could probably deal with the matter anew.
Okay.
Then I move that the prior motion that all surplus lands be sold to Historic Niagara is now null and void, and those lands still remain in city-owned land and not are designated strictly for that project, if that's worded properly.
Well, yes, we should just qualify. I don't think we've declared any land surplus downtown. Is that correct, Mr. Clerk? Mr. Seale? Have we done it?
Your worship, I think the motion was in reference to take steps towards the sale of it. We haven't negotiated the sale of any, and I think I understand the motion is really not to move on the sale of the property, Historic Niagara, unless there's further discussion at council.
Okay. Moved by Councilor Ianone, seconded by Councilor Wayne. Any discussion to matter? Councilor DiDaddy?
Well, your worship, I'm just wondering what the benefit of this is, if staff aren't moving forward on it right now. We're still waiting for our business plan for the downtown. We're, you know, there's so many unanswered questions. Is that putting the cart before the horse? I mean, I don't understand the benefit of, of making that decision at this point.
Okay. Good point. Councilor Ianone?
Well, then, Councilor DiDaddy and I share the same confusion, because I didn't understand the benefit of passing it in the first place, and, and strictly relegating us to dealing just with Historic Niagara on the lands that we declared surplus. There could have been other people, when this huge downtown proposal revitalization of $100 million was kicked off, that might have been interested in, what we did was landlock that to designate it straight to Historic Niagara. I didn't understand it then, I don't understand it now, and I think that because that still fits on the books, that's still a possibility, and I want to make sure that that doesn't happen.
Councilor Thompson?
Well, $170 million, and that's, and that's the rub right there. I think if you're new on this council and haven't been involved in all activity and discussions and reports, I still think I need a complete update and, and discussion and dialogue and benefit of the staff comments before we move on with this, and I think this is just housekeeping. If things fall in line and everything goes along well, then maybe the motion can be remade again, but at this particular time, I think it just suggests that we're, we're still investigating this, and we still have a lot of work to do to finalize the details, and I particularly would like to have some assurance that we know where we're going with respect to this.
Yeah? Councilor Ianone?
To that point, Mr. Mayor, if I'm not mistaken, didn't Councilor Maves at one point ask for all the information in regards to Historic Niagara and the downtown redevelopment and the votes that took place prior to this? I thought the three new members would have had that.
Mr. Clerk?
Through the chair, I'm not aware of that, but I know we have talked among staff about updating or providing almost a workshop format to the counselors that weren't on council last term, on all the background, on where all the studies are at, and we're still endeavoring to do that when we get, you know, the business plan, the, the assessments, when we get those all to a certain point, and we will present that to council.
Okay. Councilor DiDaddy?
Your worship, could we get staff's opinion on, you know, their thoughts on whether we should make this motion or not make that motion? I'd like to have their, their perspective.
Well, we're the politicians, we can decide, but, Mr. McDonald, do you want to?
As an opinion, if in fact this motion will make any difference relative to the action of staff, the answer is no. So from that point of view, however, I appreciate the intent of the motion. I think the intent of the motion is to formalize the fact that contrary to past motions, that no action should take place, so we view it as a direction, but clearly, we had time on discussing these issues with council before we take any steps, so, in that effect. So that's confusing enough, but it's like hard to find. So, anyway, we hadn't take, haven't taken any action, we don't plan to take any action, and this reinforces that particular lack of action, so we appreciate the direction.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, opposed? One. Motion's carried. Thank you. Okay. We have the balance of the consent agenda. Moved by Councilor Carrio, seconded by Councilor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you. On the resolutions, a resolution in the first item is the resolution that the appropriate staff person be authorized to submit a financial request to the Department of King and Heritage in relation to the Celebrate Canada program for organizing activities to Celebrate Canada Day. Moved by Councilor Thompson, seconded by Councilor Maves. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. The second resolution request is that therefore be resolved that the council, the corporation, and city of Niagara Falls confirms that no further public meetings are required regarding proposed amendments to its development charges by law. Moved by Councilor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councilor Maves. Any discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws or amendments to the bylaws listed for council's consideration this evening?
Through, your worship, there's actually four additional bylaws that have been listed in your handouts for this evening. I'll go through them very quickly. Bylaws, execute an agreement with CN Railway and the region regarding the construction of a sidewalk at grade, an agreement to, authorization to execute an agreement with Code of Cable with respect to archiving council meetings on the city's website, that's been in the works for some time. Thirdly, authorization to execute the shareholders' declaration concerning Niagara Falls Hydro Holding Corp., and that's in keeping with the decisions the council's made recently with regard to governance. The one I referred to under in camera, which is the authorization to execute a confidentiality agreement with the owners of 4342 Queen Street. So those bylaws will be numbered appropriately, so our bylaws will go up to 2007-59 this evening.
Can I have a motion to introduce the bylaws? The bylaws begin in the first reading. Moved by Councilor Peter Angelo, seconded by Councilor DiDaddy. You've heard the vote, the motion, we were seconded. Is there any questions with respect to those? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you.
Bylaws 2007-40 to 2007-59, we're on the first time.
Okay, I can have a motion to give the bylaws a second, third reading. Moved by Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel DiDadi. Counsel has heard the motion, any further questions? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you.
Bylaws 2007-40 to 2007-59, we're on a second and third time in the past.
Thank you. Next item is new business. Members of council, Ryanone, and Counsel DiDadi, Counsel Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have two issues. I would like to, my first would be, I would like to announce an event that's taking place. It's being hosted by Dr. Kwame Donkor and friends. I know, Mr. Mayor, you've been contacted by Dr. Donkor, as has Counselor Carrion and myself. Dr. Donkor, as we all know, is the best pediatrician we have in town, I think there's very few kids who haven't made it through Dr. Donkor's door at one time or another. He's just wonderful, and he's now hosting an event to help kids in his hometown in Ghana. And his hometown, and if I desecrate the name, I'm sorry, Zaky Piki, Ghana. He is, he just went back in the winter last year, and his hometown does not have a library attached to the school, and so he is endeavoring to raise funds to build a library in his hometown. He's holding an event at the Beacon Harbor Side Inn on April 14th, 2007. It's entitled Operation Africa. It's from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m. with a silent auction, cocktails, entertainment, dress, and he has a lot of African entertainment, dance, and taking place there. I really encourage everybody who would be interested in supporting Dr. Donkor and this worthwhile event, to contact Dr. Donkor's office, the phone number is 357-4554, in order to purchase a ticket. I'm selling tickets, you can contact me, Alderman Carrion is selling tickets. I really hope that the business community comes out and supports such a worthwhile event, and I ask that people consider that. And the second issue I'd like to raise, Mr. Mayor, is the potential closing, and I know there's no definite decision made yet, of the police station on Morrison. We've read the last couple of articles that have been in the paper in the last 10 days or so, and I know that you made comment at the last council meeting, but we don't have anything on the books stating our objection to the closure of 22 Division. I know that the chief says there'll be efficiencies, and I'm sure there is, but I think every good community needs a police station. I think that the tourism corridor has their own police station, separate and aside from 22 Division, that while it's funded by the province, isn't being looked at as a potential closure, because it is funded outside of the region. So, I think it's very important for perception of security in the community, to let the region and let Chief Southall know that we object to the closing of our police station, so I make that motion.
Moved by Counsel Ryanone, seconded by Counsel Wing. Any discussion to that? Counsel Thompson?
Yes, well, I'm glad Counsel Ryanone brought it up. Certainly, a municipality, the second-largest municipality in the region, deserves to have serious consideration for police protection, particularly in light of the annual visitation we have here, and all of the problems that come along with that. I think if we're in a contest with St. Catherine's, we're going to have some serious problems, and I think it's appropriate that this be brought up, and we express our strong support for locating a police facility within the boundaries of the city of Niagara Falls, because of our unique and different situation compared to every other municipality in the region. Certainly, the unit for the casino is separate, and again, unique and distinct, but I think the whole municipality is, and we could certainly, I think it would be a really serious backwards step if we don't have a police facility in the city of Niagara Falls. And from the putting one in forward area, and some of the smaller, isolated areas within the region, I think that's a real back step as far as we're concerned. So, I support the motion, and I hope that will be taken seriously at the police commission.
Thank you, members of council. During the deliberations at the region last week with regard to the police services budget, we made that very point, and the fact that we are the second-largest municipality, with the fact that we get 12 million-plus visitors a year, I think is a concern. The chief assured us, all of us who are concerned, that the matter has, nothing has been decided, there'll be obviously input required, and they're doing a study at this point, but this council can certainly go on record as opposing the closing, so I appreciate the comment that Counsel Ryanone is making. Do you have another comment to make?
I'd just like to let council know that maybe a month or so ago, the Degrees for Police held a public meeting at Dunn Street campus of Niagara College, and I know you had attended a briefing prior to that, Mr. Mayor, and the only people that were there in regards to politicians were Counselor Smeaton and myself, and I'll tell you, out of the couple hundred residents that were there, they made it abundantly clear that they do not want to see this police station closed. So, I think it's a really important resolution to send forward to the region, and I think it should be sent to our regional councils too, because I know that a couple of them are quite concerned in regards to that potentially happening. And I know that you get it at the region before we do, but if we could have periodic updates on it, that would be very much appreciated also.
Fair enough. Good. We have a motion on the floor, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried, you can answer, thank you. I have Counsel DiDadi.
Just very quickly, your worship, in regard to the Clean Yard bylaw that we discussed earlier this evening, Mr. Castrilli pointed out to me that we had overlooked an email that we received today.
Yes.
From Ms. Aronberg, and I would just suggest that she had made an amendment that we also include rural areas under three acres, and I would make the recommendation that we forward her email to staff to include that in the report.
Make that a motion, please.
I would make that.
Seconded by Counsel Peter Angelo. Okay. Any other discussion on that matter? All those in favor? Motion is carried, thank you. Okay, does that matter, or something else?
Yeah.
Okay, I have Counsel Thompson and Counsel Peter Angelo.
Thank you very much, I have actually two and a half items, and I'm going to let Alderman, Counsel Peter Angelo, and I have been involved in the same discussions, but he asked if he could kick things off regarding that, and I'll follow up my comments with respect to healthcare, and let him have the opportunity to kick that off. We just voted on appointments to the Niagara District Airport, and I'm just wondering, looking at this airport over the past many years, and I was, without exception, the strongest supporter of the district airport, I have always been disturbed about the fact that it was not a regional airport that's supported by four municipalities, and four municipalities put all the financial dollars to make it happen. If ever there was a regional airport designated for this region, the only one that could be seriously considered would be the Niagara District Airport. We're putting substantial dollars into that, Mr. McDonald, did you check that out to see what the dollars are?
Dollars, a dollar fifty, a dollar seventy per person?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I think Ken Burden would have the exact numbers.
Mr. Burden?
Your worship, the 2007 one was approximately $87,000.
So, we're approaching $100,000, and I know that there are certainly some benefits to GM and some of the industry in Welland, and I have to say that I'm totally frustrated by the fact that there probably is little opportunity for expansion and development of that airport, because of the opposition in Niagara on the Lake to any further aircraft. I dreamed for a long time that this could be expanded, and even by a private sector individual to come in, and we had one available some time ago, but there is a real reluctance to have further noise and further problems with the expansion of an airport in that particular area, and also the fact that this cannot be a regional facility. I'm just wondering what kind of benefit the city of Niagara Falls is getting as a result of $87,000 a year, and I know nobody has a quick answer, and maybe this is an opportunity to force the region into financially looking at this as a regional airport and supporting it. But I'd like to have a report through Mr. McDonald or his staff, or from the airport commission, to determine what the benefits are to this municipality specifically, and what the opportunities are in the future for expansion and development. I think they're very limited at this particular point, because I fought for many, many years to try to make that happen, it did not, and I don't see the region jumping in. Every time it's brought up as a regional item, they talk about an airport in Welland, an airport in Grimsby, and because we have the obvious one for development and expansion, which I think would be opposed strongly by the residents in Niagara on the Lake. So, I would like to make a motion, we have a report back seeing, what are we getting for our $87,000?
Motion by Counsel Thompson, seconded by Counsel Wing. Is it, you're seconding it?
Seconding it.
Okay, and you wanted to speak to it?
Yes, this is great, it's one of the things I thought as well, is that it would be great to have the region take it over, and I know there are benefits to the falls, but it will be nice to see them spelled out. I've encouraged the manager to sell the airport by spelling out the benefits to the supporting municipalities. I know I've also been trying to press for growth down there, and I seem to be running up against a brick wall, and if that's what the problem is, the citizens of Niagara on the Lake don't want the growth, and that could explain my frustration, so I think this is great, thank you for bringing it forward.
We actually, members of council, have discussed this with some of the CAOs and the member municipalities recently, and we're getting some funding assistance from NetCor, I think there's 25 or maybe 50,000 dollars, I think, yeah, that comes from them. We operate that airport on a shoestring, and I question the potential as well, the report we had that was completed a couple years ago just basically says it would be the status quo, and I've wrote to the subject with the regional chair and members of the regional council, nobody's of the real mind to want to adopt it as a regional airport, but as you said, Counsel Thompson made a point with regard to the other, there are a couple other airports within the region as well, that the region feels that they may be forced to pick up on them as well. But I can appreciate this council making a resolution to have this report brought forward, so we can discuss and debate the merits of that once you have the report in your hands. So, we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor? Motion is carried, you can answer, thank you.
The next item is something that is near and dear to my heart for the past 17 years. When you become mayor of a municipality, you make a conscious decision on how you want to conduct yourself and what you want, and what your involvement is going to be, and I've been impressed by the municipality, by the council in the last many months, with the fact that they want to get involved in what's happening in this municipality on a firsthand basis. And when you get elected to city council, that's, you know what your role is. When you become involved as mayor, it's a different situation altogether, and you have to determine, and everybody's an individual, and everybody makes their own decisions. I pride myself on the fact that for 17 years, I never missed a senior staff meeting, and if you really want to know what goes on in the municipality, that's where the decision-making is made, before it comes to council. And in fact, I felt that that was an absolute necessity for me to be there, to know what was going on, to have that come to council. And you have made a conscious decision not to do that, I think that that, in my opinion, is where you have a direct elected input into the reports that come to council, and that's all we've been doing here for the past several months, is trying to be involved, whether it's a human resources committee, whether it's anything to do with the municipality, to have the council have more involvement with that. And I'm surprised that the time of some senior staff are taken up by a committee called the Council Review Committee, where there is time set aside prior to a council meeting to go over the agenda with either the CAO or the clerk and the mayor, to determine what is going on for the council meeting, when there's just been a senior staff meeting on the Wednesday before. I think that this is vitally important, that, and contrary to some people who thought before that this is something where the politics became involved, if you have a planner, write a report, you're not going to interfere with that. If you have an engineer, write a report, there's no way politics become involved in that, but you do have a firsthand look at what goes on with the municipality. And I think that there's a real opportunity, and because we have some people who have aspirations around this council chamber for future office, and it should be an experience of everybody who sits on this council, to see what goes on in those meetings, and how decisions are made, and I tell you, if you want to know what's going to come up at the council meeting, you want to be there, because you know, you hardly have to read your agenda, because you know exactly what every report is, what the professionals have to say about it, and then you have the opportunity to have political elected involvement in that particular report, which in my opinion, I think is extremely important. I've heard the comments time and time again around here, that, well, we want to have more involvement, we want to know what's going on. Well, I tell you, here's your opportunity, and I think that there should be an opportunity for every member of council here, I'm not particularly interested myself, because I can read my agenda, I can go through it, and I've done my 17 years of sitting at senior staff meetings, but I think there's an opportunity to rotate the members of council at the senior staff meetings. Now, senior staff probably wouldn't like that, you don't have any opportunity to vote on things, they think that this is something separate, but you're wasting senior staff's time at a meeting anyway, and this is, these are important people that should be doing other municipal work. So, I'd like to make a motion that we have the opportunity for members of council on a rotating basis, and even the people like Counselor Peter Angelo that are at school during the day, would have the opportunity, because it'll probably be only twice a year that everybody would have the opportunity to do that, to do it in the summertime, and is off time, but if you really want to get a look at what's going on, and want to have some input and some involvement, because I can tell you, if you're a staff person, you can write a report any way you want, and you can give every, this council all the information you want to give, and you can lead them to any decision you want to make. So, it's up to you, you want to be rubber stamp pushers, or you want to be involved in what's happening in the municipality. I think this is a great opportunity for you, and I would like to make a motion that the council be, have the opportunity on a rotating basis to be involved in the senior staff meetings.
I'll second that.
We have a motion before the council, any comments? Yes, Counsel Ryanone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to support it, not simply because it's your decision not to attend senior staff, just as it was Counselor Thompson's decision to attend senior staff. I voted for this motion, I think it was four years ago, when Alderman Crater put it on the floor. I think it's a great idea, I think it's a learning tool for councilors, I thank them for putting it on the floor, I thought it was good then, I think it's good now, and I wouldn't mind the opportunity to sit through it once or twice.
Okay, any comments? A motion before the council, sorry, Mr. McDonald, you can comment?
I'd just like to make a comment, I just like to point out that, you know, I think, I don't have any problem at all with councilors sitting in and senior staff being, and you recall from the discussion we had in the organizational review, we have several structures relative to meetings, this is really a meeting we're talking about that's to prepare the council agenda. It's not our senior staff meeting, it's just to prepare the council agenda, so I just need to clarify that. I think it's inappropriate for the counselor to sit in to expect, to participate and be involved and provide input and discuss the reports. I don't think that's the role of any one counselor to do that, because I think that's the role of the council, and that's why we bring reports to council, because the whole council should have the same level of opportunity to have input. If a counselor, and I appreciate the learning experience, and I think if a counselor's wanted to rotate as an observer to those meetings, I think that's quite appropriate, but to suggest that you would be involved in having input and influence the reports, I think that's not appropriate. And I think that that's the role of the full council at the council meetings, and I think that I speak really, I'm sure, for all staff when I make those comments, it's simply not the place to do it, that's why you have the council chambers. If it is simply to observe the meetings and to get a sense of how we approach those reports, we welcome your participation in that regard, but I suggest that the staff would not support, not that it's our decision, it's your decision, but I think it's quite inappropriate if it's under those particular conditions.
Counsel Thompson?
I agree with his last comment, it's a council issue.
Quite inappropriate. That was my last.
We have the motion before us, members of council, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, motion is carried, you can answer, thank you very much. Any other new business? Yes, Counsel Peter Angelo?
Thank you, your worship. After the February 14th storm this year, I did have two calls, your worship, about snow being dumped on sidewalks, and I have since, your worship, inquired with Mr. Dulevik, who's told me that the city does have a bylaw against whether it's homeowners or whether it's contractors dumping snow on city sidewalks. And I think what happens a lot of times, your worship, is when there's contractors that clean driveways, all they do is they go right down the driveway, right across the road, and right up onto the other bank or the other side of the road, and the other side of the road on the sidewalk gets totally covered with snow, and the snow is very dense, very thick at that point, and it doesn't go away for a long time. So, I guess what I'm saying, your worship, is we do have a bylaw that prohibits that, but I don't believe that most of the contractors know about it. And speaking to Mr. Dulevik, he was talking about putting ads in the paper for next year, and creating a for next year and creating a mailing list of our local contractors that do do this type of work in our city. So I'd like to make a motion, Your Worship, that the engineering department create a database of all local contractors that there's no following. And just simply, Your Worship, let them know what our bylaws are, so that perhaps we can have some more compliance, and I would make that motion.
Moved by Alman Peter Angelo, seconded by Alman Wing. Any further discussion? Having seen none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Yeah, Your Worship, my second item deals with services at the Greater Niagara General Hospital. And we all know, Your Worship, that a new hospital is being built in St. Catherine's, and currently, it's being tendered, I guess, to handle enough newborns to accommodate two existing sites that have obstetrics. And the growing fear, Your Worship, among a lot of the healthcare professionals, is that GNGH is going to lose our, lose obstetrics. The problem with that is, once we lose obstetrics, Your Worship, then we would lose pediatrics. Once we lost pediatrics, then we would lose orthopedic pediatrics. Once we lost orthopedic pediatrics, then we would lose orthopedics. And, Your Worship, this chain of events is confirmed by several orthopedic and pediatric doctors. Healthcare professionals, though, Your Worship, and the reason why they asked us to speak up is because they are afraid of repercussions in their own environment, whether it's loss of operating time or other working conditions that make it difficult for them. So they asked us to speak up on their behalf. So that's the problem, Your Worship. The solution I would see would be having, would be having NHS or giving NHS a chance to actually respond to this. So my motion, very simply, would be that we ask the clerk, Mr. Ira Fida, to draft a letter asking the NHS to disclose to the public, Your Worship, because those are the people that need to know, as well as the healthcare professionals, what their long-term plans are. And for GNGH, Your Worship, in respect to obstetrics in particular. And I'll say this in advance, Your Worship, I hope that the NHS does not come back and tell us that they won't cut obstetrics based on funding, because we all know, and if you talk to anyone in the hospital, that they've been underfunded for the last eight years. So I hope that they do not tie that to the funding. And the last point I wanted to make, Your Worship, is that I don't believe that anyone who speaks about it, that their intent is actually to criticize the NHS. I believe that everyone's intent is just simply to protect our level of service, and I guess I look forward to the response. I would so make the motion.
Thank you. And just in response to you, Counsel, recently, we had a meeting of the mayors, and NHS was present, and the discussion focused around a lot of mistrust of NHS at this point because of uncertainty of what's happening and the frustration that we, as mayors, are experiencing with our residents and the councils who don't trust what the NHS is saying. There's a very serious concern that exists. We believe a lack of trust in the NHS, and they've been told that and known certain terms. So I think that your resolution would be appropriate. We can send it off to them, and, but I'm not sure what will come from it, but we'll certainly send it off. I have Counsel Ryanone and Counsel -- we have a second, everybody's going. Yeah, Counsel DiDadi, I second the motion. Any other comments? You want to make a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, I'm glad to hear that the mayors are telling the NHS that their level of distrust is rising also, because it's not if this happens, it's when. I mean, any doctor that any of us have spoke to have said, if you guys don't believe it's going to happen, think again, because we know it's going to happen. It would be, it would be like somebody sitting out in the community telling us what takes place in our committee, the whole meetings, and deciding they know before us what's going to happen. The doctors and the nurses are telling us how bad it is in there, and I think that insult to injury, they've created a foundation to raise funds for Niagara Falls residents to be streamlined into what really is, in actuality, a regional hospital. So not only are you going to have your services diverted to St. Catherine's, you're going to pay to have it happen also. The Cancer Center is something we all need. Nobody's knocking that, but it's the services they're streamlining into the major hospitals that concern, and--
Well, maybe we should qualify that, though, if I may. We're going to be asked to contribute to the Regional Cancer Center. There's also going to be a fundraising effort to raise money for upgrades in various hospitals, and that figure is coming to us yet. But so we are going to be asked to raise money for the Regional Cancer Center, which I think we'll all benefit by. And to some extent, I can say to you that we will go to different hospitals for different services, which is being done now. I know that. But I didn't want to discourage the public, but at the same time, we're telling the NHS, if you're asking us to raise money in our own communities with this uncertainty that exists, I'm sure it weighs heavily on the donors who are saying, what's this going to mean to me? And they may or may not give based upon certain things happening. So we're asking, we ask them at a meeting to explain the upcoming events in respect to that. So there are some meetings to be held in the next little while. I think there's another mayor's meeting coming up, and so we hope that that can be expressed. But I think your motion will speak to the issue as well from Niagara Falls.
Well, and not to mention the doctors and nurses, let alone the uncertainty they have as to whether their jobs are going to continue to exist at GNGH. Operating time is drastically low now as we speak. So, I mean, it was epidemic proportions a year and a half ago when we started this, and it's getting progressively worse with no answers. Perhaps if the NHS is going to host another public meeting, maybe they should host it at an appropriate time of the day, not at eight o'clock in the morning, so one or two of us can perhaps get there, but so that a broad variety of the residents can attend, because once it happens, we're not going to be able to reverse it.
Good. Thank you. Counsel Thompson?
Thank you. On the same topic, this is, without exception, a very sensitive issue, and Alderman, Counsel Peter Angelo and I were asked to attend the meeting, to listen to the concerns of some very prominent individuals who are very upset about the fact that we in Niagara Falls could be on the losing end of all this activity. I always supported the central super hospital somewhere in the Turners Corners area. That didn't materialize, and I have nothing negative to say about the Cancer Center and what's going on, and nor do I want any of my comments to be negative towards any fundraising and what we can do for healthcare. But there is some crucial decisions that have to be made in the next several years, and the professionals who are working at the hospital, the doctors, the nurses, are vitally concerned that we're going to be on the losing end of healthcare within our municipality. Obstetrics, I've heard of talked to for the last several years, could be moving. In fact, the new hospital has three thousand opportunities for births, which takes into all of Niagara Falls and Welland would be going to the Niagara, to the St. Catherine's Hospital. So basically, there'd be no births within the city of Niagara Falls. And if there are no births, where do the doctors go? They're not going to stay here. They're going to be going to other hospitals. And if you don't have any obstetrics, then the pediatrics is the next thing to go. And the fear of these people, and these are medical people and other people in the community, who are very concerned about the fact that we will end up with a wonderful emergency ward here, plus a geriatric hospital. And along with that, all your doctors, your nurses, and everything else goes. So this is a very crucial situation, and I think the objective is to have somebody from the NHS come here and explain to us what the long-term objectives, is the objective to have pediatrics and obstetrics leave this city? What are the answers to that? And to respond to those questions, so we know where we're going to be with respect to healthcare in the long term. So this is a really crucial issue, and it also comes down to the fact that where is our representation? You know, we had some great people who represented Niagara Falls and the NHS, and yet, out of total frustration, and you all know the names, Don Jackson, Liv Zappatelli, Bob Gale, all representatives on the board, and yet quit! For what reason? Because of the lack of ability to see what was going on, to get answers, and to know where we're going with respect to healthcare in the city of Niagara Falls? I think that this is probably one of the most important issues for this community in the next several years, to make sure we have proper representation, to make sure we have answers with respect to what is going to happen to the Niagara Falls Hospital. Yes, we realize there's going to be shifts for economies of scale. However, we don't want to end up, again, as the second largest municipality within the region, to be short-changed in healthcare here in this municipality. An emergency ward, a geriatric ward, I don't think the people in Niagara Falls would accept that.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. Members of council, to call the vote. All those in favor? Motion is carried. You can answer. Thank you very much. Also, Members of council, before we move on to the airport appointments, I would like to ask your indulgence to support a motion. You heard recently in the news about the request from Mayor Miller from Toronto to ask the federal government for its consideration in the one cent TST rebate to the municipalities. I'd like to have a resolution from this council forwarded to support that endeavor. So if I could ask for a motion, Counsel Peter Angelo, seconded by Counsel DiDadi. Any discussion? Counsel Fisher?
I'd like to ask you, since this government has already committed to giving another percent back to the people, our request will that jeopardize it, because I think if it comes to, does the city get it, or does the individual get it? I would not want to jeopardize that, because it has been committed that it would be returned to the public. Now, can you answer that?
I can't answer that question. I'm sorry. There's a budget coming down, but this is pre-budget deliberation time, and the budget's set for March nineteenth, and I think that the minister saw groundswell of support from municipalities, and we all need this money. We know that. I think that would speak to it.
The city does, but so does the person. So does the taxpayer. So does the individual. So can we make sure that one doesn't jeopardize the other?
I don't know how we can control that. I'm asking for a resolution with regard to the one percent, as it's been outlined so far. So I can't control what the federal government's going to do, but so I appreciate your support. So all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. We have the appointments for the Airport Commission.
Your Worship, the two candidates, the plurality of votes are Mr. Rudy Suter and Mr. Ernie Amadele. So I suggest you just pass the motion. You're accepting the motion.
Okay. Seconded by Counsel Fisher, seconded by Counsel Mays. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn. Counsel Peter Angelo, Counsel Mays, all those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you.